Okay, good evening and a very warm welcome to everyone here in council chambers and watching at home. This is the Gray Town Council meeting for April 9th, 2024. As usual, it's being held both in person and online. I'll begin with roll call. Counselor Gass?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor Height?
Here.
And I'm Counselor Chappell. To my right is Town Manager Mike Foley.
Yeah, we have some feedbacks, we're just gonna adjust for that.
If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Do any counselors have any adjustments to the item in the consent agenda, the minutes from March 26, 2024?
Yes, I'd like to remove them.
Okay, so we'll remove those from the consent agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from March 26, 2024.
So, second.
Okay, Dan, you had?
Yeah, just a couple of small ones. On packet page four, under action items, we wanted to thank Diane Vaughn for volunteering and looking forward to having her serve on the committee, just what we were looking forward to having her for. I just thought we should finish that sentence. On packet page five, under committee reports, Councilman McGuire, the planning board's sitewalk for a subdivision near Mayall Road was canceled due to the storm. I just thought the reason it was canceled should be in there. And then on the next packet page, this one's a little more detailed, but I gave a printout of the changes to Michael. Under my comments, in that first paragraph, the last sentence should just be that I updated the assigned tasks in the council task lists and teams. And then to add to that, I encourage counselors to do the same and ask that we plan a workshop with the comp plan coordinators so that we can hear the results of the town council committee survey and continue our work on the comp plan. Those were the only changes or additions I had.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Did anyone else have any edits? No? Okay. So I will go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to comment on non-agenda items? If you could just state your name and address, please.
Hi, everyone. Big crowd. Brandon Pollard. I live on Mayall Road and I'm here to speak about medical cannabis caregiver storefronts in Gray. If you're not familiar, I'm not talking about multi-state operated, corporate-owned cannabis stores. I speak on locally owned shops. I know that we've kind of gone down this road, but I'm kind of here to express my disappointment in the council's progress on something I feel I was encouraged to leave alone. Last contact was in the fall of 2023, where I was told that we have the votes to move forward. It kind of, what is not supposed to be discussion became discussion. We were told that everyone was a little too busy, especially Doug, our town planner, and so we were gonna create a committee. I have two points of contention with that. My first is that I feel like if Doug doesn't have the time to address everything, maybe we shouldn't be sending Gray staff to neighboring towns to help with their needs as well. I know that that's not necessarily the duties of, say, our zoning board to deal with things for planning, but just something to keep in mind. Also, the fact that regardless of Matthew volunteering, Krista, you kind of said you were gonna take charge of it, and it's kind of been a ghost town all winter. Now it's 2024. We've got a new council around the corner. We've got a new town manager. And I feel, my feeling, is that the last three years of me expressing my wants to grow a business in this town have kind of been overlooked. And now I've got to kind of start over again unless we can speedball this. And, well, I guess, I'm just hoping that this council can get back on the horse and maybe we can move forward with getting a committee together. Again, I volunteered, what, five, six months ago? I'm willing to volunteer again. I know plenty of bipartisan or, you know, people that are willing to sit down and go over, you know, a lot of the parameters that we're looking for in a zone. And also know that this isn't a new concept. It's been around and plucking from other ordinances from neighboring towns would be extremely easy. And I just encourage that we kind of get back on this. I'm spending time, money, and resources spinning my wheels, and I'm getting a little tired of it, so.
Thank you. I know, I appreciate your comments, and you're right, we have been slow to act on this. I don't want to get into a discussion here, but it did come up at our last committee meeting. Now that we're through hiring process with a new manager and the budget season, we are going to revisit those priorities we identified this fall, that being one of them. So, I appreciate.
My name's Brad Pollard. I've been coming down to these meetings on 33 Grape Island Trail. I'm also the owner of Spring Meadows Coal Farms property, the Innifog Farm, and I don't know what to say about what my son just says. It's very disappointing. I've had a chance to work with this town for many, many years. Fellas, congratulations. I'll date myself. I was on that 75-10 years ago, so that kind of gives you an idea how long I've been around. Anyway, I just don't, I'm not sure how I understand the process. I know that on several meetings, we're going on to three, three years now. We've had, you know, different town managers. We've been told different things. A lot of the times that we've been told has been about the budget and working on the budget. And I don't disagree one iota about what has to be put into a budget. I understand that. But I don't think we're inventing the wheel here when it comes to where we were maybe even three years ago to where we are now when it comes to cannabis in neighboring towns or anywhere within the state. We have, we have something to look at. We have, you know, rules and regulations from other towns, and I'm sure that we could learn a lot from them. I know my son has provided, the former town manager, he and I got into it one time. I remember back at one of the meetings, we had a little exchange because he acted like he was right on it, but he wasn't on it. And I know that there's been information for him, back to the old town manager, and I know there's been information that my son has provided that could make things really easy. I think one of the things about having a committee that when we talked about this was that you kind of wanted to know where we're gonna put these. And from a standpoint of, you know, how many would there be or whatever? You know, we don't dictate in businesses whether we're gonna have 10 restaurants in the town of Gray, or we're gonna have two, three, four golf courses in the town of Gray. We don't dictate on how many businesses there are gonna be. I think we let the capitalists and the free market system kind of ferret that out. Like I say, I don't think we're inventing the wheel in this. And I just, I'm very, very disappointed, especially with a business person like myself that has been entrepreneurial. I think I've provided some really positive things in this town. And I'm gonna tell you, you know, I feel like I'm a, sometimes I feel like I'm treated like, you know, it doesn't matter because we don't, we don't hear any positive response. I don't know. I almost feel like you should have said two years ago or three years ago, you know what, Brad? You know what, Brandon? Forget it. Take a hike. Then we might have saved a little time. But I have a building down here that sits. I want to get something in there. I'm not gonna put a restaurant in there that's gonna fail. I'm not gonna put something in there that doesn't fit the community part of being down there with the golf course, with the inn. Even from a standpoint of wanting a little bit of climate-controlled storage was not allowed. And you could go by that building all day long and never know what the hell was in the building.
Mr. Pollard, I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's been over three minutes, so if you could just wrap up.
Just disappointed.
Yeah, understood. Thank you. If you'd like to stay later at the end of the meeting, you're more than welcome to continue your thoughts. Anyone else?
Brad Skilling, 149 Mountain View Road. I'm here to talk about the hours of operation. I know that the staffing's excited about this, and I don't blame them. They're only working four days a week. Most of us, Adam, electricians, contractors, builders, you name it, that work with your hands, we work usually five to six days a week. And these hours of operation are gonna cut into our business. If we want an inspection on Thursday afternoon and we don't get it, we're gonna have to wait until Monday or Tuesday. So we're setting two to three pieces of equipment on a job site for three days that we can't make money on. And to move that piece of equipment out and then move it back is gonna cost us and the homeowners. So I'm quite discouraged with this as far as this town being business friendly, because I think it's not. I think Brad has a good point. I think I have a good point. It makes it hard for us to make a living in this town. And it's not me as an excavator, but if you take a builder that needs an inspection or a permit, if you take a plumber that needs to get a rough-in, he's gonna wait three days before he can get a rough-in to keep continuing work. This is a very hard thing for us to live with and deal with. And I will say that this staff is a wonderful staff. They've been wonderful to me from Nicole to Doug to Lauren. They're a wonderful staff, but I'm not against them. I'm just saying these hours are critical to me to make a living. And it's getting to a point, we have a seasonal business, so come January, we're shut down. We're shut down until probably the middle of April with this weather. So we have so much time to make a living in. We pay assessment on our equipment, so if we don't put a plate on it, we pay personal property tax, which I don't know if everybody knows that we have to. We have to register our equipment here, but if we can't work that equipment, it sits stills for three days, we lose money. We can't make a living. And we can't pull off a job to go to another job and then come back, because that's not cost-effective either for the homeowner or me. So I'm really concerned about that. And another thing I'm concerned about is how much money we're putting into this economic development. This town has not been able to bring anybody into this town probably the last 10 years. And we have spent money for the last 10 years. Now we're doing economic development committee, trying to bring money in. I'm going by, I'm seeing the old Tim Brown plaza across from Waldron's, dead empty, not a soul in it. I'm seeing the plaza down there. Most of the plaza is gone. The only thing that's taken in is a marijuana-producing product down there. We're not bringing anything in. This is a community. I think you guys have got everything, trying to bring in the box. You're not gonna do that. I think we should concentrate on what we have here, try to make the best of it, and go from there. But I think this is part of the reason that we're not so business-friendly. I mean, it's pretty tough to get a permit. Call them on Thursday. They can't get it Thursday, but we'll hit you on Monday afternoon. Well, what am I gonna do? I've got bills to pay. I've got fuel. I've got insurances. What are we gonna do? We gonna build a town of Gray for the time that that machine sets on a lot for three days? Again, that's Steph Mike's story.
Thank you, Mr. Skilling. Anyone else?
Adam Wilkinson, 35, Waymouth Road. Congratulations to the boys for winning this year. I was out of town when you guys won, and very happy to hear it. Yeah, Malcolm was on the team back in 75.
Still a small town.
Well, I'm actually, I'm here to speak to a similar issue to what Brad just spoke of. I was very frustrated to learn of the new hours that will be imposed here shortly. I spoke before the council last year regarding my frustration with the adjusted or different hours that were going on post-COVID, especially like Wednesday mornings were off, staff wasn't around. You know, I'm a local business. I got, you know, a dozen registrations, and sometimes getting into registering is kind of tough, because like Brad says, we work five or six days a week. So we pick rainy days. Whenever we have a chance, we get in to get our registrations. I shared the story last year, and I'll share it again tonight. I had one registration. It took me five different trips to this town office to get that registration. And my frustration got higher and higher every time I came in. So I was very relieved to see that we went back to the current hours of operation that we're at now, which is five days a week, even though it's limited on Friday. It's still five days. Brad, his comments about us being, you know, not be able to get inspections on Fridays is very costly, especially if we have a federal holiday on a Monday. Because if we can't get our inspections done on Friday, we, you know, if we're in somebody's backyard and you've got their septic torn apart or what have you, they're gonna sit idle Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and more than likely, there's gonna be some other calls ahead of us on Tuesday. So we may even be looking into Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday. These don't seem like big changes, unless it's your backyard that we're sitting in. And like Brad said, that's idle time for our equipment, and it's very costly to mobilize. So, you know, I'm very frustrated in what this is gonna do to contractors. And like I said, for shortened hours, as far as I'm concerned, and a day off for a few, it's gonna affect a lot in this town. And I really strongly urge you to reconsider that. It's gonna be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Anyone else in the room?
Actually, I might address this now, and I was gonna wait for the budget, but.
Well, if it's budget-related, I would ask you to.
Well, it's the hours, but the hours were part of the budget that you presented. If you want to wait.
No, if it's about the hours, you can go ahead.
That's what I anticipated doing.
Okay. So I just want to start by saying that when I started work here, September 10, 2007, just behind Douglas, it was a four-day work week here at the Town of Gray. We actually led the way on the four-day work week. And I'm just gonna state right up front, I loved it, okay? This lasted for one year, and then the council changed it back to a five-day work week. And I recollect this change was made due to concerns over the inability for contractors to obtain permits and the necessary inspections. Working in the community development, I am very aware of the needs of contractors that work Fridays and sometimes Saturdays. Thursday evenings have been the Town of Gray's long days, so as far as I can remember. The entire town is conditioned that Thursday is the late night. Thursday is the last opportunity before the three-day weekend, possibly four-day weekend, because there's a lot of Monday holidays for contractors. This will be difficult for the contractors. The town will now open at 7:00 a.m. on Thursdays. I can tell you that most contractors that I've worked with, plumbers, electricians, excavation outfits, as well as builders, are headed to the job by 7:00 a.m. And I can also speak to the fact that these same people do their permitting, and they come in with questions at lunch or between jobs or at the end of their workday. Often, septic systems require two inspections in the same day, you know, and these guys have heavy equipment that they're moving from job to job, and it's expensive. The last day for regular absentee voting happens also on Thursdays. And people are just, for out of reason, they always wait till the last minute. I'm just saying it's in every municipality. And we are extremely busy on the Thursday night of absentee voting. We continue to hear that we're a growing community. We are creating an economic development department. We're hiring, I was happy with one finance person, but we're hiring two. And we're growing our town, and we keep hearing that we're growing, we're growing. And, but the town office hours don't really reflect that. The Town of Gray hourly employees, that was me, we worked a 30, really a 32-hour work week, because we got an hour lunch. Other municipalities around us may do the 36-hour work week, but I don't think they're getting an hour lunch. And I'm curious, because as far as I've always known and understood, that the salary employees for the Town of Gray were expected to work a 40-hour work week. I don't know if that's changed, and I don't know if anybody can answer that for me, but I mean, our salary employees coming in Friday mornings, like department heads are in the Town of Falmouth, are they working four 10-hour days like Wyndham and Gorham? Taxpayers have been given a two-years, taxpayers have given our, some of our, not all, but some of our employees, just gave these two-tier salary adjustments to get them to at a level so that they're comparable with other municipalities around us. And we weren't stingy with those adjustments, I might add. So why don't we do the same thing with our work hours? There's not one community around us that closes at 3:00 p.m. on Thursday. What about the maintenance and the transfer departments? They work 40-hour work weeks. Randy works more than 40 hours, I'm quite sure. It is one thing to be an hourly employee, but there should be higher expectations of salaried employees. It should be the same across the board for all the salaried employees for the Town of Gray. The private sector, you know, I don't even think 40 hours is considered, people in the private sector, 40 hours isn't their salaried work week. I'm just saying. It's usually more than that.
If you could just wrap up, because it's been over.
I'm going to wrap up right now. I wish that the council would rethink this. I wish they'd rethink it for a lot of reasons. But one, we have conditioned the entire town that Thursdays are a late night. And we have been doing some crazy things with Thursday hours of late, shutting down, opening up, shutting down. I just think it's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edson. Anyone else? Anyone? I don't believe there's anyone online watching. I don't see any hands. Okay, so I will be closing public comment at 7:24 p.m. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from counselors?
I have none.
Okay, great. So we will move on to our presentation for the evening, and we're happy to welcome, and I want to thank you all for waiting. Hopefully that was educational for you. The state champion Gray New Gloucester Boys High School basketball team here. It was thrilling to watch you all. I have a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old, and we watched you all on TV at home. We didn't quite make it to the expo, but it was fun to watch, and we're all so proud of you and happy to have you here this evening. Mike, were you going to?
Yeah, sure. I just had a, one thing I wanted to mention. I've got a photo of the team up there on state championship game night. As the new town manager here and my family are big basketball fans, we were excited to be able to attend all your tournament games and cheer you on. And it was definitely an exciting time and grateful to be there and witness history for you guys. So congratulations. It was an honor to be able to see that. And so as you can see, and I've got a picture up here for those at home, the sign here in front, our facilities department made this sign to be added to the highway sign when you come, or the welcome to Gray sign when you come off the highway on the interstate. So this will be enshrined in history there, and maybe we'll update it to, say, 2025 next year. We'll keep adding to it if you guys get some more championships. So we're excited to be able to add this to the town sign coming in. And I wanted to invite Coach McCarthy to the podium to maybe say a few words and introduce the boys this evening. Coach?
I did not play on the 75 team in my solo. So Ian McCarthy, hello, everyone. My family and I, we've lived in Gray now for, what, eight years? So just a phenomenal community. What a pleasure to work with these guys. The basketball was fun, but the memories that we've made and created over the last four years, that's what it's all about. And it really comes down to the character of these guys, the work that they put in. They're phenomenal athletes, but they're great role models, great for the community. And those are the things that are gonna last a long, a long time. The YBA was created, I believe, when this group first came through. That was one of the first years that we had a youth basketball program, and it's growing and growing every year. And I suspect it will continue to grow after bringing home the gold ball. So those are the things that you guys should be proud of. I'm sure you know the team, but we'll go through and introduce everyone real quick. Mitch Heinrich, who's a senior, second year on the team, and center. Carter Libby, captain, also a senior. And do we have a college yet? Yeah. He's being recruited hard for cross-country, so he's a state champ on cross-country as well. Colby Mitchell, who's a junior, the big, big-time player next year for us, for GNG. Mike Minga, who was a team manager, his first year with the team, a senior as well. Jack Libby will be a junior, he's a sophomore this past year. Just a phenomenal athlete as well, was also a cross-country runner. Carter Davis, sophomore, point guard, also playing baseball as well. Have you guys been on the field yet? And just to speak to the gym facilities, I'll throw that out there. We haven't really talked about it. But do you guys have a lot of space, Carter, to have indoor practices? That was one of the things that we, we had the opportunity, this group, we went to one of the school committee meetings. And we'll continue to advocate for a new gym. Not only is it tight for us as basketball players, I can't even imagine how tight it is for your group as well. I can't even imagine how tight it is for, for your group as well, playing baseball. Carter Corson, freshman, going to be a sophomore, another phenomenal athlete. Again, playing AAU and one of the leaders for that class. And big expectations for him in the years to come. Get over there. You all have the same haircut. Charlie Albear. Charlie was a junior this past year. Again, a great leader on the team and look forward to a big year to come. Aiden Hebert, I got it, right? It's funny, I've been coaching them now for four years. I think I've probably screwed it up 75% of the time. But Aiden was a senior and is headed to USM to play ball there. So we'll have a chance to continue to watch him play, which is exciting. Nate Hebert, senior as well, senior captain, and headed to Kent Hill, I believe. All right, so prep team, they've got a number of the top players from the state going there. So I'm excited to have the chance to watch him locally as well. We've got Johnny Patino to his right, point guard, shooting guard. His first year at G and G was a junior. And I suspect he'll be definitely in the running for one of the top players in the state next year. So excited to watch this group. And again, thank you guys, to the fans. We've had the best fans all year long. The gym has been packed. And even the expo, I mean, the fact that we essentially filled that place with, with one community speaks volumes. And our town manager, manager Mike, who I believe is from Westbrook-
Yeah.
-was wearing red, so that's pretty exciting. Thanks again for having us. We appreciate it. And yeah, enjoy your night.
Thanks, Coach.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And we won't be offended if you guys leave. I know some of you guys have some activities to attend to, so.
Yeah, we have to head to the Maine Celtics.
Yes, enjoy.
Thank you for spending your night with us.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, we're going to move on. So I'm going to open up the public hearing to review and act upon proposed changes to the floodplain ordinance, Chapter 405, with regards to floodplain management ordinance and flood insurance rate map. Is, is there anyone here from the public to speak to these changes for the floodplain ordinance? No? I'm just going to invite our town planner, Doug Webster, up just to give us a quick overview.
Doug Webster, Planning Department. Thank you, Council, for giving this, and thanks to Kristin for helping emcee this. The current floodplain maps and ordinances date back to the early 80s. This is a change that has been in the works for many years. A big part of it was incorporating what they call the LiDAR. It's basically computer topographic mapping. The three most substantive changes from the 82 version to these maps and this ordinance are the change to the reference point. You can't compare the, what they call the base flood elevations from the old to the new. It's a new reference. It's what they call NAVD versus NGVD. And the second change is that the new maps are predicated on aerial photos as opposed to a blank piece of paper, which makes them a lot easier to use. And the third change that I alluded to is utilizing the now available LiDAR contours to more accurately map the true extent of the floodplain.
Yeah, and I just want to add that this change is a repeal and replace with recommendations from the state. They've advised that this ordinance be updated and effective June 20th, 2024, in order for property owners in Gray to continue participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. If we're not in compliance with their ordinance language by that date, then it can negatively impact homeowners' ability to obtain federal flood insurance and could also impact Gray's eligibility for any disaster funding. So that's what has necessitated these changes. Do councillor, before I close the public hearing, does anyone in the audience want to come up to comment on these changes?
If I may add-
Oh, if you would like to-
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that the, it's also critical that we adopt the ordinance language that the state has provided. If we make any tweaks to that ordinance language, it results in an extensive review process for the state to review which, and then with federal, with the federal government as well, at FEMA program. And it will require us to not probably be compliant with the ordinances and therefore put folks at risk for flood insurance. So we want to ensure that, it's a pretty straightforward process. The federal, the federal government had ordered these new maps to be done, and this process is being done in municipalities all over the state that have flood maps associated with them. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Thank you.
All right, if there's no one else here to comment on that, I will close the public hearing at 7:35 p.m. So I am looking for a motion for the Gray Town Council to approve a public hearing at the April 11th, 2024 Planning Board meeting and a second reading and public hearing on April 23rd, 2024 to review and approve the proposed changes to the floodplain ordinance, Chapter 405, with regards to floodplain management ordinance and flood insurance rate map.
So move.
I'll second.
Are there any councillors who'd like to, go ahead, Dan?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Doug, I'm sure you can help.
Sure.
One of them is that this document was prepared for us, and it said that they took into account our fee schedule and any other, which is really the only thing, I guess, that we have control over in the document.
Right.
Is I understood it. Is that, that accurate?
I believe so, yes. Kristin was more integrally involved with those details. It's the request, requirement almost, if the town residents are going to be remaining eligible for floodplain insurance. The requirement to repeal and adopt was, was pretty rigid.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have, we, we don't have much say in the content, and we don't have much say about the timing. We do only really, I guess, have say around what the fees are. And I know we talked about fees recently within the budget. One thing that I noticed about this that I wasn't aware of is that I don't think there are a lot of challenges, but ZBA plays a big role in this. And there are some really specific criteria in here as far as how they can give variances. So I think there's, you know, probably a workshop or something in, in order for them, for us to, to fill them in on, on these details. The last question I had, and I'm having trouble finding it in the language here, but I'm pretty sure I read that it said that, yes, that we can change our, we can change the fees so long as there's language in the ordinance that allows us to change the fees annually. And I couldn't, it may be there, there's a lot of material here, but I couldn't find that specific language in our ordinance. So that's just something I'd want to, want to check on, I guess.
If I may, in the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, in the proposed ordinance, yeah. I just want to make sure that piece gets in there so that we're not stuck having to, to do something extraordinary in order to make a change. Those were my only thoughts. Like I said, it's not a lot of room for us to maneuver here.
Right.
We're adopting pretty much what they're, what they're giving to us.
Anne, you had comments?
Yeah, not too much. I, I did notice that the ordinance was last updated in 1993, so it was due for an overhaul, I'd say. The proposed schedule looks fine to me. And I, I just would encourage that we, I'll, I'll send this along to the Resiliency Committee because of our recent watershed work. And, but it seems like it might be good also to share with the lake associations just so they're aware of it. And I don't know whether that's something the Planning Department could do or if you want me to do that. I, I could certainly do Crystal Lake and Little Sagal Lake.
Okay.
If I may speak to the fees?
Yeah, go ahead.
So under Article 4, it's on page 4, it talks about the application fee and expert's fee. And it says, "A non-refundable application fee shall be paid to the town clerk and copy a receipt with the application." And then it also says, "An additional fee may be charged if the code enforcement officer, planning board, or Board of Appeals needs the assistance of a professional engineer or other expert." And that's in the ordinance, so we have that ability to charge whatever fee that's appropriate in that case.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I think, that's good to know. To Dan's point, though, I think we wanted to include language that just states that we could update these fees annually, so I don't know.
Well, so those fees are, it says that additional fee may be charged, so we can set those fees separately from, from this.
All right.
On an as-needed basis.
On an as-needed basis.
Okay.
I saw it, too.
Any others have comments? I didn't, Doug, you had some thoughts?
Just a reminder to the council, in accordance with the materials that are in the council packet, that assuming this moves forward as anticipated, that the second reading will occur, but the effective date will not be 30, 30 days after the second reading, as with most ordinances, because of the desire on behalf of FEMA to have one magic day on June 20th of this year, where the maps and the ordinance change all at once. That's for the benefit of, of course, lending institutions and all of the administration that's associated with the floodplain.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point of clarification. Thank you. Yeah, so the effective date wouldn't, even though, if we pass this ordinance on the schedule we've outlined in May, it would not be effective until June 20th.
Yeah, we just probably want to put the effective date in the motion when we get there.
We did that on the council packet, page nine. We had a, a motion for the council's consideration, assuming it moves forward.
Yeah, I saw that there, and we will certainly include it in the language when we vote to adopt or not. Any other final thoughts? Okay, I will go to vote. Anne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So next up, I will open the public hearing to present and receive public comment on the FY 2025 municipal budget at 7:41 p.m. We will begin this evening with some comments from town manager Mike Foley.
Good evening, Council and members of the public. We've been here a number of weeks to review the, the budget. And so we've come to the end of that process to adopt the warrants. And I want to take a moment to go through kind of, in totality, the, the budget that we've put together. And so I initially had started here in the middle of the budget process. Some budget work had been done. But I established some budget goals of financial accountability and sustainability, as well as laying the foundation for the future. I had recognized early on that there was some essentially, you know, mis, not mismanagement, but disorganization amongst finances and financial management here in the town. And in addition to management of revenues and expenses, I wanted to ensure that we had appropriate accountability in place for the town as well as sustainability in those figures for the future. And then as part of laying the foundation for the future, we have been working hard here in the town, prior to my arrival, on growth and a number of different things. But the town government itself hasn't grown during that time. And therefore, some of the things such as financial disorganization, lack of business growth and development, things occurred due to those investments not being made. So I wanted to help make some investments in the town to help it grow and be managed appropriately for the future. So as folks know, we've been going through the budget for a number of weeks. And throughout that time, I presented a number of different changes and things for the council to consider since my initial budget presentation. But we've revised revenues to reflect based on actuals of revenues that are collected. The town, as I've shared with the council, for a number of years kind of continued with estimated revenues year after year and kind of kept them status quo without making changes based on actual collection. And one of the revenues that the town has that's fairly critical, that was budgeted based on the same amount the last few years, is motor vehicle excise tax. That's the tax that folks pay when they register their vehicles. And that budget number this year is on pace to be overcollected by $700,000. And so that overcollection of $700,000 may have potentially helped to avoid some of the budget challenges that the town had last year. But it's something that we are, want to make sure we reflect and properly forecast in the future. And at some previous budget meetings, I provided the council some forecasting on revenues, both the motor vehicle excise tax as well as municipal revenue sharing, which are the two largest, what we would consider, non-property tax revenues, where a majority of the, of the revenue used to operate the town is property taxes. And so we're, we're looking to revise our budgeting processing in the future to a future budgeting program called ClearGov, which essentially eliminates the working in spreadsheets. Working in spreadsheets can be very challenging, can, human error can be made, and things of that nature. So we, we, we're subscribing to this ClearGov system to help us better manage and also be more transparent to the public. The ClearGov system will establish a budget website on the town where folks can dig into the deep details of the budget and be able to see what different departments are budgeting and the amounts into the future, and also provide historical information year after year as we grow using that program. And this is used by a number of towns across the country. It's not used by a lot of them in Maine. It has been used by a few in Maine, but we're looking to be able to use that, given the, the public budget process and the public budget referendum, to be able to have a tool that people can use to dig at deep information into the budget. This also has capabilities in it to develop a budget book, a standard budget book, that would look the same every year if somebody wanted a printed budget book or if councillors wanted a printed budget book. And it also will provide information for people to see where money is being spent as it links to our accounting software here in the town. And so we also have created a new human resources budget, which incorporates all the benefits and payroll taxes. As I talked about with the council in years past, those are difficult figures for each department to have an effect on. So we've kind of pulled those numbers out of the budget and put those within a human resource and benefits budget, which allows all those to be accounted for in one place. And makes the, the budgeting process a little bit more easy and seamless and transparent for everyone to see how much money we're spending on those specific things. And then we combined a number of budgets that were spread across smaller budgets, such as contingencies, legal, IT-related items, and facilities, into more appropriate budget, town or department budget specifically, to help best manage those figures. And then some of the changes that we've experienced in the time that we started the budget review is we've heard on some insurance increases. We've had, I had reported a couple of them at our last budget meeting in workers' comp insurance as well as general liability insurance, which actually showed a slight decrease for what we had budgeted. But our health insurance, which across the board, everyone is seeing challenges with health insurance. We have an August renewal period, so we don't have an exact renewal figure yet. And the insurance company has told us to plan for between 10% and 20% increase. And you've seen, the superintendent talked about it when he came to visit us, that that's a big driver to their budget. So one of the tweaks that I've made since I last presented the budget to you is we budgeted for 15%, which is the middle between the 10 and the 20, hoping that potentially will be somewhere around that number for health insurance increases. So those are some of the, the major budget changes. So some of the goals, I mean, the other goals and changes that we had, we were working to implement a new economic development department. And that economic development department doesn't just work to bring in new businesses, as we heard during public comment. It works to retain and grow businesses within the community already. So business retention is an important aspect to a community's success. And where I came from, that's something we heavily worked on. And business retention and expansion was very successful, and it helps to, to grow the tax base using existing businesses here without necessarily bringing in new businesses. But with the goal of the town, with the village transformation projects, some of the comprehensive plan work that have already been established before my arrival, we're going to need someone to help promote the town as a place to do business. And that economic development- And that economic development department also includes a, a town engineer slash project manager that's going to help with engineering resources for the town, as well as manage the projects that we have. The village transformation project is a, is a very large project that's currently helped being lent by Councilor Gass, and it's really not fair to have a councilor with a small stipend help to manage a project. We should have staff that manage that project and help carry it into the future. And that's a multimillion dollar project, as well as other small projects that we'll have over the years, that the town will be wanting to coordinate, many of those being economic development projects. And so, economic development activities are eligible expenses under tax increment financing. And as I work to try to get a full understanding and accounting of the current tax increment financing accounts, the only expenses that we're proposing this year is to support this economic development department. I also shared with the council that twenty-five percent of my salary will be charged to the economic development and charged to the TIF, which essentially takes it out of the general fund budget, so the general property taxpayer's not paying. And also, twenty-five percent of our communications and I T director, who does a lot of marketing and promotion for the town, which is an eligible economic development activity. So, we're taking some pretty large salaries out of the general fund. And so, I just want to underscore that these new positions do not affect the property tax rate at all, because they're using tax increment financing money, which is sheltered from property taxation, and it positively affects areas such as municipal revenue sharing and aid to education. And so, these, these new departments, this new department will be able to help with a lot of the business concerns that I've heard in the short time I've here, some of which we've heard this evening, can help us in all those areas to coordinate those. So, we have the appropriate staff for that. The other is improved finance department staffing. Again, as I found early on, we collect about twenty-two million dollars in property taxes here in the Town of Gray, approaching twenty-three million. And for a number of years, the town has had one finance person to manage that and expenditures of as much as that with both the municipal budget and to support our share of the school budget. It's not really appropriate, and it's resulted in some of the disorganization that we've had in municipal finances here in the Town of Gray, and it has, has caused us to not have appropriate checks and balances in place to ensure the proper management and spending of taxpayer funds. And so, it's critical that we make the investment in improved finance department staffing. Those positions include an accountant, which will be essentially the second in command of our finance department, which will help us provide reconciliation support and checks and balance to support of everything that's happening within the town. And then, a payroll, halfway through the year, we'll, we'll be adding a, a half, a payroll, half payroll, half accounts payable manager, to help manage those processes. And then, therefore, we'll have our finance depart, director to be a check and balance of those activities regarding finance, and our H R director to be a check and balance for payroll activities, so that we can ensure that nothing inappropriate happens in those areas, which I know has been a concern identified in previous audits. And so, this will be a more right-sized finance department staffing here in the town to help manage the town. And those two positions are hitting the general fund budget, but with the improved revenues and things that you'll see when I get down to the, the numbers, we're able to absorb those without negatively affecting the property tax rate. We've also added the recreation budget to the general fund. A number, the rec, pre, previous years, the recreation budget has been, uh, used as what's called an enterprise account or a special revenue account. And in those cases, the, what's being spent and how it's being spent really hasn't been transparent to the public. A lot of what the recreation department does is also supported by the entire town budget. In the budget last year, we had approximately sixty thousand dollars. But also, the recreation department is supported by our facilities and park staff. It's supported by H R with hiring. It's supported by finance for fiscal responsibility. So, at the end of the day, the recreation department isn't covering a hundred percent of its expenses. So, we wanted to positively reflect that in the budget, so everybody can see what we're spending recreation funds. And we've, we've included the revenue that's brought in for recreation, so folks can see that as well. We also moved debt service, which is, you know, bond payments or loan payments that the town has to the general fund. They previously were accounted for in capital improvement, which ultimately isn't the appropriate place for them, because capital improvement expense has already occurred, and this is now an operating expense that should be in, in the general fund. So, we moved that to, uh, property reflect those. And in addition to the proposed mill rate reduction that, that we're proposing with the current valuation of the town, there is a statistical revaluation that's happening, which is an update of values on properties within the town. Will reduce the tax rate even further, but the, the, essentially, if the person's value of their property doesn't go up higher than what the, the revaluation is, most everyone in the town will see their property tax bill stay the same, based on what we propose. There are some revaluations that's occurring. A lot of lakeside properties, higher value properties, if folks added additions or renovations in the time since the last commitment. But we don't know what that figure is until the ta, the tax assessor makes their final commitment, which is after the April first deadline of everything that's after April first. So, between now and July-ish, our tax assessor's working to develop the final tax commitment, which will then have a new mill rate associated that's different than what we're actually proposing. But this year, we're, we're proposing a mill rate based on the current valuation and what that will reflect with the new budget. And so, some future ba, budget challenges that I've shared with the council and it's important for the public to know. Law enforcement, the Town of Gray has only two deputies that cover the town that, that the town has a contract for, where we have a similar population, similar types of calls for service, and similar traffic and activity that the Town of Standish has, when they have eight deputies. And so, we'll have to work to strategically manage how we grow law enforcement here in the town so that we can have proper law enforcement coverage. There's been some recent news where there's been a, a large drug ring that has been identified in the town through the Portland Police Department. And so, those are things that we want to ensure that we have appropriate law enforcement to help support those challenges. There's a lot of group homes in the town that experience mental health challenges. So, between law enforcement presence and maybe future mental health support presence that other municipalities have with mental health liaison, that might be something to consider. And then, also, the traffic that travels through this town. We, the number one complaint, I think, council has received, and I've received here as the town manager, is speeding cars and people, you know, going through town without any accountability. And so, that's something that we want to make sure that we're able to, to try to address in the future. Solid waste and recycling is something that we'll need to talk about more in the future. I've shared previously that there's laws regarding recycling that's changing, which will present potentially a revenue opportunity for the town. And the town will have to evaluate how they want to use those resources and whether they continue to handle trash and recycling the same way that they do now. There was a rumor started that unfortunately caused people to think I wanted to close the transfer station. That's simply not true, and I'll address that in, more further in the town manager's report. I don't have the authority to close the transfer station. That's your authority and ultimately the voters, if it was through the budget process. There may be a slight change in how we handle trash and recycling, but the transfer station serves a lot of town needs, other than just household trash and recycling. And so, it'd be likely that we have some sort of transfer station in the community for years to come. Also, the, I've identified the Gray Water District as a future challenge. We've identified potentially an analysis in rates compared to the Portland Water District. We had heard from residents on Portland Road about water quality in their wells and the desire to extend a Portland Water District line. So, we may have an opportunity to potentially partner with the Portland Water District in the future, working with the Gray Water District. And if we're able to do that, we might be able to see reduction in water rates for both the town and residents. Also, auditing, given some of the financial challenges that I've outlined, the need for an audit, both myself and the finance director are new. Finance director started in July, and I started here in, in January. And it's appropriate that we have a baseline audit, which reflects the financial condition of the town before we were here, because we couldn't, we couldn't and shouldn't be held accountable for previous actions. And then, going forward, we can be held accountable for appropriate financial management of the town, which is a critical responsibility of ours. Also, the fund balance, it continues to be a, a challenge. I'll, I'll expand more detail, uh, further on in the slides. And then, also identifying the budget, we have a, a number of one-time expenses, approximately two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So, that will help to give us a cushion for the start of the next budget year for any cost increases or things of that nature, given those one-time expenses. And I also point out that this budget is not impacted by L D one, which is a common question that has caused issues here in the Town of Gray. So, now to talk about the fund balance quickly. So, the current fund balance that, uh, commitment that's required by our charter is a maximum of three twelfths of the tax commitment, or twenty-five percent, with a minimum of two twelfths, or about seventeen percent per the charter. And the two numbers I show at the top of my slide here, the, the number to the left is six million two hundred thirty-seven dollars. That's the fiscal year twenty-four tax commitment. And then, fiscal year twenty-five tax commitment is the other one. As you'll see, it's less. So, essentially, we, we're raising less money in taxes, which results in the mill rate reduction. But so, we should have about one point six million dollars in the, the fund balance in order to have the, the fund balance per the charter. And so, based on our, the last audit that we figure that we have to be able to account for, the town has an unassigned fund balance of six million two hundred seventy-four thousand, or it's one hundred percent, one hundred, little over one hundred percent per the charter requirement. So, essentially, the fund balance has grown over the years because they've either underspent in expenses or overcollected in revenues, such as motor vehicle excise tax, for an example. And at the end of the budget year, anything that's left over goes into the fund balance. And so, essentially, we've overcollected taxes for a number of years, which has caused us to be at the hundred percent per the charter requirement. So, some of the ways to be able to appropriately manage that fund balance into the future is to either use it for capital expenses, which the town has done some of in the past, or use it to lower the tax rate. And the town used that, uh, for capital purchases and to lower the tax rate in fiscal year twenty-three in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And then, also, in fiscal year twenty-four, the budget that we're in season right now, they you, budgeted one, uh, one point nine million dollars to use for that purpose. And so, in this budget year, we're proposing to try to step down that number. And given the positive revenues that we've experienced, we're able to step down that number to a million dollars. So, we've reduced it by nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And so, with these audited figures that we're basing it, we'll end up at the end with a forty-one percent or two million, a two-point-five million dollar fund balance. We're confident that that's going to be larger when we have a fiscal year twenty-three audit, because we know we overcollected in excise tax last year, and we knew we under-expended in the budget. So, we're, we're, we are confident it's going to grow, but we can only base the number based on the last audit we have, which is a fiscal year twenty-two number. So, we'll be at forty-one percent after this budget, but we're, we're fairly confident it'll be larger than that. And we'll, we'll develop a plan on how to manage that fund balance in, in the years ahead. So, the final budget, based on the warrant figures that we show here for administration, this includes the administration, H R, community development, economic development, assessing, code enforcement, general assistance, communications and I T, and elections. And this is, these numbers are restated to reflect the addition of the recreation department and, and some of the figures that weren't included in prior years. And this shows three million five hundred sixty-eight dollars in fiscal year twenty-four. And so, this year, we're proposing an administration budget with four million seven hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, which is about one million one hundred eighty-four thousand, which is a total increase in those areas to support increased health insurance, increased insurances across the board, our salary and wages for current staff, as well as the new positions. And some of those figures were included in the, what was used to be called the municipal finance category in the audit. And so, those are all brought together. So, that shows where we're growing spending in that area. In library and recreation, the recreation fund was previously an enterprise fund, as I talked about. So, this shows a significant increase, but because we didn't have a budget for recreation before, we don't know exactly what was planned for recreation expenses before. But this shows our library and recreation is nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars. And then, for public safety, which is the fire department and law enforcement, it's two million eighty-eight thousand in last year. And this year, it's two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then, public works, which includes public works, solid waste and recycling, as well as facilities and parks, was previously three million two hundred ten thousand and is now at four million one hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that reflects an increase of nine hundred and eleven dollars. And a lot of that is increased costs for waste disposal, tipping fees, salt, staffing, things of that nature. We do include, as I talked about with the council previously, a half-year position to be added to our public works department to support the growing needs of the community, and a half-year position in our parks and facilities to support the growing needs of the community as well. And then, debt service outlined there, which shows last year it was one million three hundred eighty-one thousand, and now it's one million two hundred twenty thousand, which is a difference of, a decrease of one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And then, capital improvements, that budget last year, minus the debt service, because I've restated it and taken it out, it was one million three hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars. And we've reduced that down to one hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So, as you'll see, um, let me see if I can get my mouse here. We have the reduction, or the total increase in the budget from this year versus last year is one million three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, or roughly eleven percent. And that's supporting the areas, the new areas like economic development and the new positions that I talked about. And you'll see in the revenues that we've reflected the increase in TIF funding from, to support some of those. So, you'll see when, in the calculations ultimately. But just want to show for a visual, the total portion of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Thirty-six percent of it is the administration of the town. Seven percent is library and recreation. Sixteen percent is public safety. Thirty-one percent is public works, and debt service is nine percent. So, that's, uh, the, the spread of how the budgets work. And so, for the final estimated budget, you'll see the municipal general fund with, with all those things added together and restated in previous years. It shows an increase of three million eight hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars. Again, that reflects the added recreation budget and, and the various accounts that we're accounting for. Capital improvement is showing a reduction of two million five hundred twenty-six thousand. TIF, this is the, to support the TIFs that are growing in the community. So, those, that means economic development is happening in those TIF districts, because new taxes are collected, and so, we have to account for that in the budget. And then, the school department is proposing a, uh, right now, they've whittled down their nine-point-four percent budget that they had to six-point-eight-six percent. So, the superintendent provided me that number late last week, and I reflected it in the updates. And then, the county budget is showing an increase of fifty-seven thousand dollars, or six-point-three-one percent, which ultimately shows a total budget for the community for fiscal year twenty-five with the school as presented of twenty-eight million one hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars, or an increase of two million four hundred eight dollars, four hundred, four hundred eight thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars, or nine-point-three-five percent. And so, this is, kind of shows that the budget as a whole, what's accounted for. So, forty percent, forty-seven percent of the budget is municipal. Forty-six percent of the budget is school. And I'll just remind everyone that we split the school costs proportionally between the Town of New Gloucester. So, the school budget is much larger than our municipal budget, probably, you know, double the, the figure that, that we are responsible for. That's, and that's also reduced by state funding. Three percent of it is TIF, and three percent of it is county. And then, with the revenues that we have, which is the non-property tax revenues, which helps us to reduce what we need to raise in taxes, that's increasing this year from five million nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars to seven million two hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars, which is growth of one million three hundred nine, five hundred, three hundred nine thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars, or growth in revenues of twenty-one point four percent. And those are areas such as recreation fees, as well as motor vehicle excise tax, municipal revenue sharing, and the other fees that the town charges. So, with that, we get what was called a tax need, so what we need to raise in taxes. And again, the school number is just estimated. And so, with all those figures added together, the net need for municipal portion is six million one hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars, which is a reduction in what was needed to be, re-raised last year to support the municipal budget of one hundred twelve thousand two hundred forty dollars, or a one-point-eight percent decrease. The TIF has grown the- The TIF has grown the same number that I reported in the last slide. And then the school estimated growth is 6.86% or $821,933. And with the addition of the county, that brings a total tax needs that we need to raise in property taxes to $20,844,539, which is $950,679 more that was needed to be raised last year, or 4.77%. And the biggest driver in that is the school budget. So with that, we take what we need to raise in taxes, and it calculates a tax rate, or a mill rate, as everyone refers to. And so the municipal mill rate last year was $4.75, and will be reduced by 14 cents to $4.61, which is a reduction of 2.6%. And then the TIF will need to raise additional 13 cents to support the TIF. And then the school will need to raise an additional 52 cents from 912 to 964, which is a 1.8% increase. And the county, we need to raise an additional 4 cents, from 70 to 74 cents, which is 5.3%. With that, that brings a proposed tax rate under our current municipal valuation from 1518 to 1573, which is a 55 cent increase, or 3.6%. And again, that's reflecting the estimated budget of the school. So all we're talking about this evening truly is the municipal portion of the budget, which is what is voted on as part of the warrants. This will have an effect on the average homeowner, with an average home assessed at $350,000, which isn't equal to market value, their tax bill would go up approximately $190, a little, approximately $191, or 3.6%. And so just want to review the budget review schedule. We had a public hearing on February 6th, where we received our first public input. On March 7th, I delivered the budget to the town council, just barely exceeding the charter deadline of March 12th, which is 90 days prior to the municipal referendum. March 12th, the town council first budget workshop review session took place. Also, on March 19th, we had a budget review session, and March 26th, we had a budget review session, and the final budget was referred to the council for consideration. And today, we have a public hearing and approval of warrants, which need, by charter, need to be approved by May 7th. So we've exceeded that date by about a month, and our clerk is very happy to be able to have that exceeded, so she can begin ordering the ballots. And then over the next two months, I will work to provide, with the help of the town council, community budget education, to be able to answer questions, to have budget documents posted, to provide a budget mailing to residents, as the town has done in the past, to ensure everyone is properly educated on the budget. That education will start immediately, but it'll be refined as the school, final school budget is adopted, which doesn't occur until May 16th at the school budget town meeting. And I'll remind everyone that that's at 6:30 PM. And I think that's at the high school. I don't have the location listed here. And then on June 11th is the election day referendum, where we vote on the fiscal year 25 budget warrant, and also the school budget validation vote. And so where have we come from since the beginning of when I presented the budget? The proposed budget increased the municipal portion of the tax rate by 13 cents, and now we're reducing it by 14 cents. So based on some of the expenses that we proposed, we were showing a tax increase, which was a modest tax increase, we're now able to reflect a decrease. I feel like, given the budgeting challenges and some of the financial challenges that the town's had, this is more of a tax rate correction in this year, that we're able to correct the tax rate, and then work to manage the budget in future years to have responsible property tax increases that both residents and businesses of the town can support. We also accomplished this goal, or accomplished this change by the improved revenue forecast, as I outlined, as well as spending adjustments, mostly in capital. I presented to the council the discovery of 2018 bond funds, which had not been spent. And some of those had not been spent, because they were scheduled to support a new fire truck, which has finally reached the planning processes to be considered. And so we are able to use those previous bond funds to support the fire truck and some of the other identified expenses as part of that bond, and some newer expenses that are eligible for that bond, under the authorization by the voters in 2018 and the authorization from the town council. And so we're also able to absorb the budget growth that we had with the growth in revenue, so we didn't have to raise taxes higher to grow the budget in the areas that we had to grow the budget. And as I said just a moment ago, the reduced tax rate is really a correction of the tax rate from the previous year. And so that's all I have to present this evening, and be happy to help answer questions from the public and the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike? So I'll just open up the public hearing for comment from the audience. If you do choose to come up, I just ask that you state your name and address for the record. And while we don't have a time limit, I would just ask that you're cognizant of how long you're being, and also whether or not you're repeating things that have already been mentioned, just in interest of time for people here in the room. And would anyone like to come up to comment on the budget?
I'm going to change a little bit, because you've changed a little bit. We run the impression there was a time limit on this, so I'm going to try to work through my notes here. Fran Monroe from Gray. Lewis and Row. I think I'm going to address the process right now. So we've always had what was called a special town meeting, where taxpayers were invited to voice the thoughts about the proposed budget. Once the public hearing was completed, the council adopts the budget, and then the issue is warranted, and then issues a warrant and posts it seven days before the election. This is what traditionally has happened every year. So something changed this year.
Just to interrupt, that's what we're doing tonight. This is the public.
I know that, but I'm going to be referring to the warrant. Usually, we don't have the warrant right behind, back from a public hearing, because this is opportunity to help maybe convince you to make some changes to the budget at this point, and then you have to, you know, revamp your figures and stuff like that if you, you know, hear. So that's basically what I'm talking about. And also, the fact is that until the budget is adopted, the warrant is in a draft stage. And we don't have a draft warrant, we have one that doesn't have draft on it. So I want to know why that changed. Also, the town charter in Article 5 Budget, Section 2, Paragraph B, states that the warrant articles, this warrant article does not meet that requirement. Also, the combining of line items in departments such as winter/summer roads, literary festivals, etc., makes it difficult to make comparisons from year to year. The budget should be more transparent, not less. So the bottom line, the public, well, I was going to say should have reasonable time allotted to them to ask and make suggestions tonight. So hopefully you'll listen to what we have to say, and see if we can come to some, you know, agreements and changes. Specifically, and what I meant by that, by the way, on that, I had my thing in front of me. On the warrant, that was my, the problem with the warrant is that it has a section for capital improvements in the warrant, line 5, I think it is, in the budget. It has a line for that, and it's supposed to be a comparative statement attached to the budget for that capital improvement, it's just that this one year, it doesn't have comparisons from the prior years. So that's missing. So that makes the warrant article, you know, even though the numbers are the same, doesn't have the background that's required by charter. So that was my point on the warrant, two points actually. So I'm going to continue on then with the, specifically to the budget questions. So the first one is, the one that's always asked every time I turn around is, what's the update on the missing $27,000 from April of '23? I think the citizens, it's been a while now, we should, it's been over a year, just about a year, so we really should have some kind of update what's happening with that. Also, in your comparisons of the budget, the actual spend, money spent from prior budget, is only dated up to December 31st. We are now two-thirds into the budget. So as we sit here as citizens, looking through, you know, the figures and trying to match things up, or see what's really happening, how much did we really spend the last year's budget, and we have a better handle if it was more current. So I'm a little disappointed we don't have more current information about what's been spent, you know, up to this, up until two-thirds. So now, I have a specific question, it's about the 2019 bond. I tried to get the information prior to this meeting, so we won't waste a lot of time here, but I didn't get a response from the town manager, so I was a little disappointed. Number one, what is...
I didn't receive any communication from you.
I sent it to you.
I don't have it.
Okay.
I have an email address that has my name, so I'm not sure if you sent it to the old town manager's email address.
Yeah, town manager's. I sent it to the town manager.
It's not an email.
I should have brought my computer. Okay. The first question I have regarding this subject, first question I have regarding this subject is, what is the capital reserve fund balance? It should be approximately $967,000 based on that bond. So do you have a figure on that capital reserve fund balance? Second question, it stated at the last council meeting that some purchases were not with the bond money, which again, you reiterated this evening, that should have been made. So included was a 20-yard roll-off, and was bonded for $5,200. So I'm kind of curious, what has been the cost to replace it today? Is it more, or is it the same amount, we purchased for the same figure? And that's the same question for the fire equipment that wasn't purchased. And also, what else was not purchased that should have been? We so far heard just about two departments. I don't know if all the other departments, library got paved, and, you know, some of those other items that were listed on the bond. I know it happened, because I visually saw that, but I don't know about the other items. If those two are missing, maybe there's other departments that didn't get what they were supposed to get through that bonding. So then again, the question is, why do we need an Article 5 in the warrant, town warrant, to raise and transfer $194,000 to capital reserve fund and appropriate it? So I'm not sure what that's all about. Why do we need that in the warrant, if we have that other balance? So that's basically my questions on that bond. And now I'm going to go into HR, and a few new things in there that I want to know what the justification is. And that is a recognition of $8,000 for an employee. I don't know what that mean, what was the purpose of doing that? A separation pay, which is brand new, I haven't heard of that before, for 50 grand.
That used to be called sick and vacation pay.
I'm sorry?
Those, the separation pay is just a new title for two different accounts we had before, for the same purpose, for when people leave a job and they need to pay out, we need to pay out remaining sick and vacation time that they've accrued. That's what that is.
You explained that we need a new system, Mission Square, I guess it is, for $243,000. What is Mission Square then?
So I properly reflected in the budget the fact that the town has two retirement systems. Mission Square is what's sometimes referred to as the 457, or in the private sector, it's a 401K that's provided to town employees. And the other one is main state retirement, which is, right now, the town only provides that to the firefighters, the firefighters. It's a retirement plan that they're eligible for. And so in the past, the town incorporated those into one line called retirement, and I broke them out to separate, to try and be more transparent about those two items in the budget.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, also in the HR department, I assume that the, the, well, John's position, when he came into town, when he retired, I should say, was to be part, town manager assistant, and also HR. And then that job changed evidently, and he's only doing HR now.
Two years ago, the voters approved that additional job, or rather, a promotion to HR director for his position.
Oh, I know this is not recent. I know this isn't recent. Okay, but I'm giving you history, and so that's what happened. But then that job changed, and he no longer is an assistant to the town managers, I understand. Is that correct?
Correct. He's the HR director.
Okay, so that means he's just doing HR.
Which is a very large job, yeah.
And so, did his salary get adjusted for that as well?
Yes, the voters approved that adjustment.
So a decrease, and now you're going to get him an assistant, basically? Is that what that is?
No.
That payroll, payroll, part-time person you want?
No.
Okay, what would that be?
So the finance position that I described is going to split the responsibilities between doing payroll and doing accounts payable. And so our employees here at the town are paid every other week, and so that one week they'll process payroll, and the other week, that person will process accounts payable, to ensure vendors and things of that nature associated with the town are paid. And right now, the HR director does payroll, but it's not really appropriate to necessarily have a department head also doing payroll and issuing them. It's better to have a lower-level employee perform the payroll function, and it be verified, and ensure that appropriate funds and hours and benefits are accounted for in the payroll, and he will provide the check and balance function of that payroll. And earlier, you referenced the missing $27,000. That's because you had one person managing the finances of the town, and also the payroll of the town. And that person issued themselves pay. And so therefore, that was something that has to be dealt with appropriately through law enforcement. And that was identified in the audit, which was a public document that the town has seen, and that has, that case is currently before the district attorney, which is something that we had to wait from them on the status of that.
Okay. So then again, the salary gets adjusted for that department as well, then for HR?
I don't know what you're referring to, salary adjustment.
Well, because you're going to have someone pick up part of the job of doing payroll.
Well, the, and the human resource function is not, we're not reducing that person's salary, because we're having the appropriate check and balances necessary to make sure the town's run appropriately.
Okay. All right. Now, this economic development, that $346,000 for that brand-new department. So this is my vision of what I see, what you're, you know, creating here. And don't forget, even though these are new positions, and they've been offset by other parts of, you know, revenues and stuff this year, this is going to be ongoing expenses that the town has to pick up every year from here on out, and for salaries, and that's obviously. So the budget is going to grow. And so, you know, next year, we'll see, you know, a decent hike because of new positions and, you know, other things that I'll be mentioning. And I don't have very many, but you know...
Fran, that entire department is being funded through TIF funds, not the general fund. The general fund is what's funded through taxpayer dollars, the TIF fund is not funding those positions.
It's the philosophy I'm getting to?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And that is, creating a whole department like that, looking into the development, the economic development. One of the reasons we don't have major economic growth in this town is because we don't have the sewers. You've already talked about, you know, people who complain on Portland Road about having problems with their water. However, we did put in a six-inch main years ago with the TIF money, and create a TIF district to satisfy that, and so they were all supposed to be hooking up to that if they had a problem. But aside from that, once you start looking into water coming in, and this is all my vision of... vision of what could happen, you start looking at sewers. And this is what this economic development group will be, you know, gearing to, because it's all natural, that's what economic development does. So, all the time that I've lived in this town, 50 years now, which everyone here is probably sick of it, but I've lived in this town, and I didn't hear anyone ever state that they want to become like a town of Wyndham, contrary to that. Everyone does not, you know, want to be like a town like Wyndham. So, we have to keep that in mind. So, I think this expense is premature and excessive, and it needs to be taken out of the budget.
Fran, could I, could I just ask you to wrap up your comments, so that others have a chance to comment?
Well, I have a few more.
Okay.
And again, the question on the reval, we just had a reval a couple of years ago.
It's not a full revaluation, it's an equalization project, so it's a little bit different.
Well-
Continue.
The, we've got IT software, brand-new IT software, $60,000. It's always, you know, it's an awful lot of money. Law enforcement, okay, so, that, you know, it's been stated that we don't have enough coverage in this town. So I happen to live on the highway, and let me tell you, there's plenty of coverage. And most areas that have room, there is always a trooper there. Blue light, red light's constantly going up and by my windows, every day, day and night. So we are very well covered, and let me, I can assure you of that, and other people that, of course, feel the same way. So people who've lived in this town know that we do have a lot of coverage. I wasn't able to follow the Public Works budget, I can't understand what that's all about. The audit, I have a, I have a couple of points on that. In '23, the actual budget for the, actually spent $30,400, which we pretty much spent every year. In '24, we budgeted only $15,000, which, by the way, where did that money go, in the general fund, probably? And if we spent 500, and we spent $500 in '24 when we had no audit. So I don't know why there was a spent amount in that column, and that is as of December 31st. And now, why in the world are we budgeting $100,000? If we take two years' worth of audit, it should be around 60 grand. So that seems like pretty excessive.
You're right that it is a large increase in the auditing, but as you are well aware, we've had, Ish and Mike stated earlier, where our books need to be thoroughly reviewed, because we've had a lot of transitions here, and some missing money, as you noted. We are planning to use that money to have a, what is it called, more like a-
A very detailed audit.
A very detailed audit, where we're going to go through the books with a fine-toothed comb, and make sure everything is actually being accurately reflected. So that's why there is an extensive, an increased cost in that line item.
Electrical costs, in the '24 budget was $20,000. We spent $4,800 as of December 31st. Why are we budgeting $26,000 this year? General assistance, '24, we budgeted $59,000, spent $17,000, and now we're budgeting $60,000. Community services, professional services went from $10,000 to $76,000. So-
Those are some of the one-time expenses I reported at the beginning.
Pardon?
Those are some of the one-time expenses that I reported at the beginning.
So, we're looking to hire an assistant town clerk, and anytime I'm in the office, there's usually only one person working, sometimes two. We have three windows available to serve customers with three office staffs. Staff, why do we not have all three windows open when there's a line of customers? Why do we have to stand in line so long, and only have one or two clerks working? Now, secondly, we are sharing our code enforcer with North Yomet, which is the case things are slow in the code enforcement department. Why are we hiring an assistant? This started, and by the way, the code enforcer already started April 1st, evidently. How much reimbursement are we receiving from North Yomet for this position? And are we paying the code enforcer part-time wages or full-time wages that we personally have? Stating that the town office is on extended hours is a misstatement. They work in the same 32 hours, just shuffling the hours around. I really hope that you'll listen to all the comments that are made about that change in staffing of the office here. It's very serious, what, you know, what you've done. So basically, those are my questions, and, again, you know, it looks nice to have, you know, a low figure on the bottom line, but there's a lot of story in between the pages that I think the citizens need to be aware of, that can cause us a lot of grief in the next few years, especially without revenue coming in, and we're trying to grow this town too fast. And I see some big problems coming. Thank you.
Thanks, Fran. I do want to, I've addressed some of the things you were talking about as you went, but I do want to touch on a couple of things you mentioned. Regarding the timing of the warrants, I believe, and other counselors can correct me if I'm wrong, they've always been on this agenda for the public hearing. We will certainly table the warrants if we feel that is necessary this evening. It's, we wanted to put them on there, though, however, as a consideration. Regarding the line items that you're noticing in the budget that have been combined, or titles have changed, a lot of that is a reflection of the hard work our new finance director and town manager, Mike Foley, is doing to correct a lot of the errors and inconsistencies we've seen in our books. They're trying to make things more transparent and obvious at what you're looking at. I acknowledge that that is adding some confusion for comparisons over, year over year this year, but going forward, it will be clearer and much more expedient. I went back to last year's town warrants that noted, that noted this capital improvement plan. I know you said that there previously in the warrants, there was a comparative figure for that, there, there wasn't last year, and I don't believe there has been in years If that's the case, we will definitely double-check with our lawyer, but they, I believe, have already reviewed our warrants and thought that they were sufficient legally. Regarding the capital reserve fund balance, we can definitely look into that. I don't have, I think, Mike probably doesn't know off the top of his head what the cost of items were in 2018 for the bond that was approved for the items we're purchasing in 2024, but we will be using the funds for the items that were approved at that time. And I think that was, I had addressed the other items, I don't know any other account.
I'll just add, for the, the bond, the fire truck was identified, I think about $680,000 in 2018. That cost has grown for anyone that's purchased a fire truck, and the Chiefs budgeted $1.3 million for that. We're going to have an RFP, which will receive proposals from developers or dealers that construct fire trucks, and we'll hopefully recognize cost efficiencies and things to make that within budget or less than budget. The other items, there was a number of fire department things that actually weren't purchased. They budgeted for a snowmobile, they budgeted for a boat, they budgeted for a couple of things that they didn't, they didn't purchase. The roll-off containers at the transfer station were budgeted, and we're purchasing two of them for about $10,000, when they were budgeted for $5,200. And there was a number of them budgeted, more than two, that was budgeted as part of that bond funds. It's also my understanding that a number of the items that were authorized as part of that bond, dump trucks, there was a lot of equipment, a lot of things that shouldn't have even been, money shouldn't have been borrowed for, for that term, and we'll rectify that in the future. A lot of those items came in cheaper than they had budgeted for. And I don't have an accounting of that, and one of the reasons we don't have an accounting of the capital reserve fund is it's very difficult, I've shared with this council a number of times, to make sense of the finances here at the town, and that's why we need the support to help clarify those, we're both auditing and accounting support. And so we're doing our best to build a budget that moves the town forward, while we take and invest the time to clarify and review the accounting of the past. And I'm sorry, that's the situation that I came into, and I'm trying to correct it for the town.
Dan, you had a comment?
Well, I, yeah, I have some, I have some comments, but I'm going to wait till the public hearing's over to make.
Okay. Yeah, I, if they're relevant in the moment, I would prefer to do it now, because otherwise it gets lost, and after many people to comment, but do you feel like it's, can be addressed at the end?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment on the budget? Please feel free to come up, introduce yourself.
Brad Skilling, 149 Mountain View Road. I appreciate the talk that you gave, a little more clarity. I do agree with the new budgeting format, so things are more, rather than spreadsheets, because I'm looking at figures of $98,000, $100,000 for these new employees. One question, is it at their salary, does that include their health benefits, their retirement? So what is the total cost, is me as a taxpayer, for this new economic development person? His salary is, or the engineer, is it 90? Is it 90 plus 20 for their insurance? I want to know what the total cost of these, these, you know, these new hires are going to cost us. Now, just their salaries, their insurance, their retirement, I want the whole bit.
I can, I can outline that in detail, but they're included in the, in the human resource budget, under, under the benefits.
Yeah, but you can't tell me off the top of the head what an employee in the town of Gray gives.
Well, so the two, those two positions, I budgeted at $90,000 each, which is the engineer, project manager, and economic development director. We don't necessarily believe we'll hire them at that number, we'll have, we'll post a range.
Does that include their health?
That's just the salary of what we budgeted for.
So that does not include-
And so, it's hard to budget for benefits and retirement, because we don't know what they're going to enroll in. We also don't know what, they'll have a family, or they'll be a single person, or they'll have kids.
I think the clarity is, people of the town of Gray, we're paying the bill. I would like to know what the cost is, if I'm going to hire, if I'm hiring an employee, I know, I've got to pay him this much money, his insurance is, social security share, Medicare share, I want to know. And as these guys sit here, they want to know. They don't want to say, well, $90,000, well, all of a sudden, the $90,000 becomes $125,000. Well, that's a big difference. You know, a lot of us guys don't have benefits, we're working six days a week, we can't afford to pay a guy's benefits. If, I think that the money that you're paying out to these peoples, in my book, I don't make half of what these guys are making, them working six days a week, and I don't have benefits. So retaining people, if they don't want to work here, let them go. Go somewhere, let them go. If there's not enough money from them, not enough benefits, let them go.
Too many people anyways.
All right, if you, if we could just, one at a time, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, I think it's exorbitant. So, the $90,000 is, I know it's an estimate to hire somebody, but we're going to have to put on top of that the retirement, so it's going to be well over 100 per employee that you're going to hire. And hopefully, with this new program that you're going to budgeting from, we can set down, and I can sit down at my computer and say, this is what he makes as an administrator, this is what his salary is, this is his health benefits, this is his retirement. This makes a big difference to me as a taxpayer, on what I'm going to vote for and what I'm not going to vote for. Another, another thing I have is, with inflation costs, and living costs going up, many younger and older families are having a harder time paying their bills. Their groceries, their fuel, their heating, all that electricity. My wife has, for 11 years, has run a backpack program at Memorial School that serves every school in this district. She has pantry in every school. She has a clothes closet with a gale at the high school. She sees us every day, food insecurities, and we've all heard it, we've all seen it, we see the pantry in Gray here. So it's hard for me to believe that we can't take a closer look at this budget for these seniors that are living on, I'm a senior, I'm 66, 67. Sure, I'm going to be on social security, am I going to be able to afford to live in this town? With everything going up, $22 million coming into this town, but yet my taxes are still, still going up. I mean, we're hiding some figures by bringing some money back out of, out of capital, to offset some of this cost, but it's still, it's still an increase. Most people, yeah, but it seems to me that the people in the town are taking advantage of some of the, with the salaries, with the increases, most of us don't get a 5% or 10% increase. Some of these guys in the last couple of years have got a $20,000 increase, which is astronomical. I just feel that for, for the people in this town, the younger families that are trying to raise kids or have kids, to live in this town, pay their taxes in this town, we're doing a lot of, we're doing a lot of things in here, we should slow down, think it a little bit more seriously. And I always told my kids, it's not how much money you make, it's how you manage it. And I'm hoping you're going to take that into mind. You know, we can only bring in so much money, so we're going to have to pay our bills, and we all do, these guys all do. But you're getting to the point that we're going to lose a lot of people in this town, a lot of older people, that can't afford to live in this town anymore, to be attacked out of their house, out of their land. And I've lived in this town my whole life, I want to live here, but it's getting to the point that, in the last three years, that I've thought about going somewhere else, because this town isn't the community it once was. We worry more about what's going on in the street. These boys here tonight, most of those boys I know, I coached soccer, coached basketball, did all that, well, those boys, they don't even have a field to play in, that the town of Gray owns. I put $375 every, when I did my subdivision for my kids, when they built their houses, to go into recreation. And that recreation, they told me, was going to go buy land to do fields in this town. This was 15 to 18 years ago. We don't own a piece of property in this town, we can put a ball field on it. We can't use the schools, my kids are coaching softball, two soccer teams, baseball, they're going to New Gloucester, they're paying to play in New Gloucester, because they can't, they don't have a field here in Gray. We're worried about sidewalks, we're worried about walking, we're worried about bike trails. We don't, I want bang for my buck. If I'm going to give you money, and I told them that night when I went to Plymouth, if you want them to give you $1,000 for that recreation field, I want somebody lining the field, I want somebody putting a net on the field, I don't want it sitting in interest-bearing account and not being spent. Well, to my knowledge, and I think I asked Gary at that time, he was on the council, how much money was in that account, and it was over $40,000, and this was 18 years ago. So you'll tell me where that money is. Where did it go? This town has no accountability on what they do. Most guys in business have to have a thumbprint on, on a, on a piece of paper, this money's got to go this, I got to pay this bill, I got to do this. I'm hoping this new budget, whatever it is that you're going to buy, but, but, will be more transparent, we'll see where our money goes, see, see what it's been used for, and if we have an excess at the end of the year, that it goes back into the budget for next year, rather than be spent. Because I know a lot of guys get certain amount of money in their budget, they want to spend that money, because if they don't spend it, then they'll look at a decrease next year, so they want, they want to spend everything they can. I think we should tighten things up in this town, spend a little bit more research on what we're going to buy, when we're going to buy it, and do where you need it. It's not what you need, it's not what you want, it's what you really need. And I don't think, in the last 10 years, we've done that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all on the same page about needing to be accountable with our finances, so that's what, definitely what we're focused on. Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, my name is Ken Wilkinson. I live on 193 Shaker Road. You talk about so much about saving money, and now you come in here, and you're going to a four-day week. You know what Brad's been talking about, what an insult to the public. And you're going to get out Thursday at 3:00? Where the hell are you going? We're right here. We can't go anywhere. But you guys, it's almost like a daycare. We want you to be around, and if they ain't around, you should be around. Because we want someone to come out and inspect the septic, or inspect the framing, or inspect the insulation. Not on Monday, oh, Monday's the holiday, we'll do it Tuesday. Well, come to find out, that lady's sick. You know how many times we come in and someone's sick, or you're dealing with someone that's temporary, and then, oh, now, it's not on his day. Between temporary, sick, and four days a week, we can't keep up. Grow the hell up. Get a job. It's four 10-hour days, or five, eight-hour days. Simple math, just do it. Why, why are you any better than we are? That's how I feel. We're paying for you to be here. And the only way I know you're here every time, your car's at the charger. You're getting a free ride for something, but I have to pay for mine. Your truck is on that charger every time I come here.
Mr. Wilkinson, if you could keep the comments to the budget, that would be appreciated.
I'm just saying, we, we need help, you know? And you just can't-
I'm here to help.
But you can't go to a four-day a week. Do you know what an insult that is to the public?
Can I have an opportunity to explain the reasoning?
I'm tired of you explaining, just do it. Work five days a week, Friday is a workday. Sad that you could get ahead a little bit, but you always talk about being behind. Well, how can you do it on a 32-hour week? You're working with the public, you can't get ahead doing anything. I think if I was you, I'd come in Friday, when no one's around.
Mr. Wilkinson, if you could address me, I'm representing the council.
I'll do it.
Okay, great.
I think you know where you are.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on the budget?
Yeah, Gary Foster, 181 Lamath Road. I just have a question, why the need for a project manager and an economic development director? We've, over the years, and I served on the council years ago- We've, over the years, and I served on the council years ago, I've served on the planning board. The biggest deterrent to economic development in the town of Gray has been the planning board. So we can have two competing departments, that we're paying for. As far as a project manager, what, are we having, are we having ongoing projects? Well, we need a full-time project manager, I mean, rather than hiring an engineer?
The, the project manager position will be a combination position of an engineer and a project manager. And we do have very, very many ongoing projects, particularly related to infrastructure here in the village and also around town, that we've, we've identified a need for an engineer. It was actually in a proposal for last year's budget. We removed it when revisions were necessary after it failed in June, but it is still a need here, that's critical.
Another, another of the questions I had about the, the overall municipal budget. Significant increase, and granted, you're taking money out of the undesigned fund balance to offset the tax increase. But what happens next year, or the year after that, when there's, when there's no funds you can take out of the undesigned fund balance? Those costs aren't going to come down. I think we're going to get hit with a tsunami of tax increases over the coming years.
Yeah, I, I recognize there is an increase overall, but our, as Mike pointed out earlier, our revenues are also going up dramatically, and they're being, they're absorbing those increases, and they should continue to do that. Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment?
Adam Wilkinson, second time around. I just had one comment about the, the potential economic development department. We're looking at salaries roughly around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund that department for different positions. I realize some of that funding is coming out of TIF money as well. But, pardon me, my, my math might be a little rusty, but more or less, if you're going to fund a three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salary, you'd have to have roughly twenty-five million dollars worth of base to fund that, have taxpayer fund that, or taxes pay for that department. So my question is, if we put together this department, and they don't either help retain businesses or help grow some new ones in the realm of twenty-five million dollars, do we also have the right to say, listen, you guys aren't producing time to head somewhere else? Because as a business owner, if I can't get my job done, and I can't make money to pay for myself and be self-funded, obviously, I don't stay in business. So to me, any entity, whether it's government or private, if it can't stand on its own two feet, then you don't need it. Like I said, and most of the time, in our realm of, in our realm of work, we can't do that in a four-day work week either. Thanks.
Thank you. Mike, would you like to address that?
So I'll just quickly explain, the, the economic development budget isn't three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of salaries. It's only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of salaries. Twenty-five percent of my salary is, is included in that budget, and twenty-five percent of the economic, I mean, the communications and IT director salary is included in that budget. And that is to take those portions of those salaries out of the general fund budget, which the regular property taxpayer pays, and to use the TIF funding for that. The TIF funding is also forecasted out for decades, so we'll have funding to be able to support this department and support the department as it grows. And so, the rest of the, the funds are in there for different items to support that department. Training dues to different organizations, marketing and branding. We're going to help create a, a brand and market the town as a place to do business, and to help support and promote existing businesses here in the community. And so that department will do that. The town has previously had an economic development director. It's actually a position identified in the charter as, as appointed by the council. And so, in the short time I've been here, I've heard a lot of desire to bring in new businesses here in the community, from members of the community, and new businesses, or new tax-paying businesses is one of the ways that we can grow revenue that doesn't affect the residents. And so here in Gray, the property tax base is about ninety percent residential. And so, ten percent of it is business. In other communities, they're, they're closer to forty or fifty percent business, fifty percent residential. We're never going to reach that, but if we can continue to grow our existing businesses and bring in new businesses to help reduce the property tax burden for residents, that's ultimately the goal of economic development. And the economic development TIF funds that we have, one of the TIFs that we have is the Village TIF, which we've already seen some property owners in the village make improvements. But the town, before I came here, acquired property that we're going to need help to develop that property, the gateway property. And if we can develop all those properties with tax-paying businesses, that money is going to go into the, the Village TIF fund, and be able to fund future infrastructure investments, whether it be sewer, or water improvements, or improved sidewalks, parking, things of that nature, to support the village, to help support the businesses that are here now, and potentially grow future businesses in the future. If we recognize that, that, that those positions aren't producing, then we'll manage that and figure out how best to utilize those resources, and not use them as the town decided in years past. But I think folks will find that, under my leadership, we'll be able to help support the business community and help grow the business community here, to better grow the town and to better support the property tax base. And that's a tool, I can't do all of it, I'm going to be a big part of it, but I can't do all of it. And an economic development department will be able to help do that. So I hope that helps.
I appreciate it, and like I said, it's just, if you can sense there is a, there's just a touch of.
Yeah, if you, if you do have more to say, if you could come up to the. Okay, all right, sorry, people at home can't hear you, yeah.
Brad Pollitt, 33 Grape Island Trail. I, I just have a question concerning the, the department that is proposed. And Doug just took off, and it was probably one that he could probably address.
He's back, so.
Oh, he is? Oh, Doug, okay. Currently, right now, if I, if I'm to put a project through, which I have done that in the past here, I have had to, for instance, the, the town has an engineer that they hire, and we would, if I have a project, I, I have to pay for the town engineer. So where do we stand with a new department when someone comes in? Are we still on the hook for that? And of course, it goes also with the town attorney, we, I remember running into an issue back when we were doing Callaway Drive, the project right there, by, by the golf course, and there was a issue at the planning board, which we, which we felt we were right on, but they had to go to the town attorney to get an opinion. My attorney also had talked to the town about that, we thought we were in the right. We actually did what we could, not to embarrass the town attorney, but we also paid for his opinion. And we didn't want to fight it, because we just, we don't like to get in fights with the town, sometimes you don't win. So if someone could address at least on the, on the part of where, if I do put a project together, or anybody here comes into Gray and puts a project together in the town of Gray, are we, are you telling us that we are not on the hook anymore for paying for engineering or, or that type of thing that may be needed?
Yeah, that's a good question, I, Mike could probably answer.
I can explain, so to some extent, some municipalities have a town staff attorney, and there's permit fees and things like that that are associated, that are, that's a funding stream that we have in the budget to basically help offset property taxes as well. But we'll have a staff engineer, we don't know the, the experience of the person we're going to hire yet, of what their engineering expertise is. And so, if we, primarily if we have a civil engineer, they should be able to review a lot of plans. So they'll be able to review that in a more cost-effective manner than outsourcing that to an outside engineering firm.
Would I, as a developer, or somebody coming in, would we get a bill from the town of Gray concerning the engineering fees that you, or is that going to be a service of the town for someone coming in?
I'm not overly familiar with the, the total fee structure for planning and development at the moment. But, yeah, I'll, I'll explain, I'll explain it, it's, it's, we'll have to review that when we have a new position in place and how we handle those things.
Right, but I think that's, that's really important from a standpoint of, of, of a development that could come in. And I know, I know from some even people that have had something very recently, that their wants and needs were certainly not even part of what was proposed during a planning board meeting. And, and these were almost like extras in there, and, and an engineer had to get involved with some of these things. And, and, well, this is what you, this is what you owe me, and, and there you go. And I think that's really going to be clear as, for anything going forward, for any kind of development, whether it's going to be a double whammy for somebody, of coming in, whether not only is the town engineer going to be referring, or, or talking to another engineer about a, a project that may be going on, or, or as a developer coming into the town, is that going to be part of the, part of the cost that won't be, you know?
I think part of the work I'm going to do to have the town be more business-friendly and support the existing businesses here, is we're going to refine those processes, and that's something I can't do overnight. And we'll work to, to try to promote business, that's something that economic development director is going to work with us on, to, to help bring planning and economic development together, and advocate for the businesses, and help to, to work things out. And that's something that I'll help to work through. It's just going to take time, and I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do it all at once.
Thank you.
Well, while we're still on that note, that's not what I wanted to talk about, but Bradley, I just want to make sure I'm not going to be paying for his projects, okay? Sorry, Bradley, but we, we had a conversation recently, and, you know, I am familiar with our planning board, and that how when somebody comes to planning board, they have to put money up front for escrow and inspections, and it's usually a decent chunk of change.
I'm sorry, could you just introduce yourself?
Pam Edson, Yarmouth Road. And I just want to know, with this new economic development, I mean, and what you're talking about, Mike, that this isn't going to fall back on the taxpayers to, for his project, that he, that, or, not just yours, I'm sorry, Bradley. But anybody's project, that right now, as it stands, when they come in, they pay these fees themselves. And, you know, they have to pay for the inspections, for the engineers to come out, and, you know, if there's money left at the end of their project, then they get a little bit reimbursed back from the, from the town, it's their money. But that's how it's taken care of. I did want to talk about, though, what I was really wanting to talk about is the warrant articles, because somebody brought this up tonight, and I know exactly that we have never ever, in the entire time, I went all the way back to two thousand and ten, because I saw this on our agenda tonight. Ever have we voted on the warrant arti, had you, have you voted on the final warrant articles following a public meeting? It has always been fourteen days later exactly on your following council meeting. And I would think the reason for that would be this. What it actually says to all of us is, we're, we're putting the ballot out, you're having this public meeting. In the past, it has made us feel like you're going to hear our input, and you care about what we say. But ultimately, what it spoke to me when I saw the warrant articles coming second on the agenda tonight, following our input, was you could care less, because you already have your ballots drawn up, and.
Well, let me just apologize, that certainly was not the intention.
But you can understand.
I, I can see how the, the perception is there. I came into this evening with the understanding that we were going to hear from everybody, and if there were concerns we wanted to address, that we were certainly open to tabling those warrants tonight. We have had several discussions in prior meetings about how we, in fact, would like to hear more from the school budget. They have not finalized their process and their, their numbers yet. And they will be close to doing so at our next council meeting, so personally, I would like to have some firmer numbers from them. So we very well could, you know, table that this evening, so.
Okay, well, I just think that it sets a, a better precedent, that you actually do care what the public might have to say. Because I certainly didn't feel that way tonight. I did want to mention too, I, I think Fran was trying to convey something to you guys earlier, that I have it here, and when you put the budget together, and I know that we have new people, but on page eleven of our charter, can I just bring this to you again?
Yeah.
B, yes, B. We are supposed to have three, it says right here, that we are supposed to be given, on, on our budget, the, the actual expenditures for three preceding fiscal years. Both increase and decrease of any item shall be indicated. I think we only have twenty-three and twenty-four, in the prior, in now this year's prior year. And we should have had probably twenty-two, according to the charter, and twenty-two is.
Well, that, you know, probably was just an oversight, as you mentioned, some of us are newer to this.
I understand that, but I am.
That's not in the, that's not referring to the warrant articles, it's referring to the town manager's budget message.
Right, and it didn't have three preceding years on it, okay?
Right, they had two, you're right, and perhaps we need to.
And I, I looked at previous ones and, and tried to model what previous ones had done, so I apologize that that was.
Yeah, there, it's all there on the previous ones. And I just want to say one more thing too, because I was listening to Brad speak about the fact of, oh, insurance, and how much are these people going to cost us total? And when he was speaking, I was thinking, you know, you guys have changed up the budget so much. I actually found our budget fairly easy to follow. I mean, you have community development department, you know how much, you know, the head of the community development makes, you knew how much PM made, and then you had the cost of insurance and everything, all under the department. And it is all being shifted around, so we're really not going to know the totality now of what anybody costs us. So, I mean, it is going to be a little bit of a bear for us to know, I think. Historically, I mean, our budget has, I, I've, I've been putting it together myself in the clerk's office, that was one of my, my jobs down there, and, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with it. So, I mean, maybe this new way of yours will be easier, I guess time will tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment on the budget? Okay, yeah, come on up.
So, with the additional information about that bond, I'm very concerned. It appears that maybe a lot of it didn't get spent, and that nine hundred thousand dollars that, what I tell you, that should be in there by now, nine hundred thousand something, is not there, and maybe got spent. My concern is, I don't know who issued the bond. The legality of all of this, what is going to be the legal impact on the town if the bondholders found out that we, in their eyes, fraudently looked for revenue that we didn't want, I mean, looked for money or expenses that we weren't spending it on?
Yeah, Mike has consulted with her attorney on that.
Let me explain, so, I've consulted with legal on that. There, there is legal obligations where the bond funds are supposed to be spent within three years. And so the town did not comply with that, and I would.
Excuse me, one moment, that was a five-year bond, though?
No, it's a three, the, the, the two thousand and eighteen bond was actually, it was a ten-year portion of it, and a twenty-year portion of it. But the bond funds needed to be spent within three years of the bond issuance. And that's because they're tax-exempt bonds, and the folks get tax-exempt investments associated with that, so there's IRS regulations. And so that was not done, and the town was not compliant with that. One of the compliance factors is that the town didn't have that money in an investment account that generated more than what was, what's considered the prevailing interest rate of the actual bonds. So because the town funds were not properly invested, they were not invested at a high rate, so therefore, we were not in violation of that, that interest portion. And so, the, our attorneys have advised us that we need to dispose of those bond funds as quickly as possible, using what was authorized as part of that bond in the two thousand and eight ballot, and what the council authorized those to be done. And everything that we will be spending are stuff that was previously authorized by the town for that money to be spent on, and those aren't included in the current capital budget. If we didn't have those funds available, a lot of those items would be included in the capital budget, and for which we would be raising taxes to account for.
So when I said it was beyond the three years, I see what they, the bond did, and so it was the three years, but they put the money into another reserve account, the bond proceeds, and then dispersed it over the next five and ten years. That, that basically is what happened, right?
Whenever they purchased a dump truck, or any of the eligible expenses, they took that money out from that account that they set the money aside in, and then the money remained there. And as part of the research and work that I'm doing to try to get the finances organized, we've discovered that those funds were there, and we sought legal advice on what to do with those, and I brought to the council the explanation from legal, and explained to them what needed to be done. and the proposal that I have is to resolve those. The legal does feel that we can defend not spending the funds if we ever were to be inquired about by the IRS because we, one, didn't have the prevailing interest rate, and, two, it was during COVID when it was difficult to acquire things and cost areas and, and different challenges associated with COVID during those years. So, it, it, it's something we can try to explain should there be questioning about it. But in the meantime, we'll have proven that we made an intent, attempt, once it was discovered, to resolve the matter.
I'm not concerned so much with the IRS because, as you say, there's always exceptions. But I'm concerned about the bond company coming back to us and suing us. Will the town be under any of that kind of, um, so I think if you didn't get that question asked to the attorneys, I think you should, so that, you know, we, the citizens can be assured that something's not gonna come back to us and, and end up costing us a whole lot of money.
Yeah, legal reviewed that. There's no issue with the bondholders. It's the primary, the IRS regulations associated with tax-exempt bonds.
Okay, good. And one more thing on the town engineer. So, the, right now, the developer pays for the town en- the engineering that they, they have done to their properties. Is it, is there gonna be a time? I think that question is asked, but I wanna make sure I understand. At any time, the town engineer would not be able to take care of that project and would have to subcontract it out or hire someone else, does that expense fall on the taxpayers? Or is that gonna fall onto the, um, the developer?
If it's associated with a development, it'll likely fall on the developer.
Likely or will?
It will, yes.
Okay. All right, then I just wanted to get that particular thing, um, played up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last thing, and I'm not gonna talk again. Oh, did you wanna talk, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Andrew Edson. I'm at One Homestead Acres, Gray Maine, and, yes, I might be related to some of the people here. One thing I wanted to ask about was when you add salary and benefits, what percentage of that is benefits and what percentage of that is salary? Is that something that you guys have looked at?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, when you, when you add up the total compensation for, say, the new engineer, what, what percentage of that is benefits? Is it 40%? Is it 30%? Is it 50%?
Well, the salary itself is, is, is what the salary is. What the benefits is what, is, depends on what the person signs up for benefits. So, we'll have, uh, when we have the people in these positions, I'll be able to identify more of a true cost for that position. Right now, they're just estimates.
Do you have a projection as far as the total compensa- or the total compensation package?
Well, it, it, you know, it depends on, again, what people do, but they can, we, our retirement has a program that's up to a 6% match of the salary. Um, we have to pay social security and Medicare, which is a certain percentage of, of salaries. And then the health insurance, there's, depending on what they select for coverage, it ranges between $1,000 a month to $2,000 a month in premiums, and the employee is responsible for a share of that, and the employer is responsible for a share of that. And so, those all are, all dependent on what people select for benefits.
And it's also dependent on the, the salary that they're hired at, 'cause like Mike said earlier, we're budgeting for $90,000, but you might hire someone less than that, so.
You're not gonna hire an engineer for less than $90,000.
Well, we've, we've anal- we've analyzed sal- area salaries, and we, we have range, a range would probably be 80 to 90,000. So, somebody might, if they're a newer engineer, um, then we might start them out at $80,000 a year. If they're an experienced engineer, we probably will start them at, at the, the $90,000.
Gotcha. And then I had, I had one or two other items that I wanted to touch upon. One of them was the two added police officers on that.
There's no added police officers.
Those are just existing. We contract with-
So, we have two existing, but we're, I, are we looking for a total of four or just?
We're not looking to change anything this year. We contract with the sheriff's department for two, it's actually 2.3 officers to serve the town of Gray.
So, we're not looking for two additional ones?
No, that's not, that's not changing.
Identified that as a future consideration for the town, just trying to share people what they may need to consider in the future.
Okay, sorry, no, I listened to one of your previous meetings, but, uh, yeah, and, and, and I just wanted to state, I like, I like my town, I like my community, I like how it's set up. I think that the transfer station is very unique. I don't know if there's another town that has a transfer station like we have. It works well, people like it. Um, we've talked about going to curbside. I'm not necessarily against it. I don't know if the density is there, the population density is there for it. And I know that in, in a lot of towns right now, they're having issue with curbside trash being picked up on time just, just because they don't have the employees. But going off of that, I would just like to say that, um, I'd like to, we haven't, we've talked about this new recycling program that the state's doing where we might actually get funds. Has anyone thought about putting those towards maybe helping Randy with tipping and hauling fees, keeping those low? I, I hear curbside trash pickup, but we're not really given the community options, 'cause from what I've heard, a lot of people like the transfer station.
No one, yeah, no one has decided to move to curbside. It was just one of the possible options when these funds come in from the state, because we have to align with, um, data collection in order to receive the funds, so that we need to better track where our trash is going and how much, uh, we are receiving. And so, we certainly will be investing those funds in facilities at the transfer station, and then we'll have to, uh, figure out what, how we're gonna manage trash at that time, which-
And if I might add, in previous years, the town has evaluated curbside, and it was cost prohibitive. And so, with these funds, it might not be cost prohibitive for the town to have curbside. And a lot of communities that have curbside pickup, some still have a transfer station, Thalmouth being one of them, which you should be familiar with. And so, they, they have a transfer station that has all the other things that Randy processes at the transfer station, like brush and electronics and construction demolition debris, all those different things, they can process that. So, we're always gonna have a need for a transfer station, and it's unique. The only other resources that exist like that really is down in Portland, and so you wouldn't want residents to have to go to Portland, so there's always gonna be a need of some sort for a transfer station.
Okay, cool. And I guess, just losing my thought, it's gonna come back to me in just a second, though. I will say I've seen some towns that do, um, you know, the public services, Public Works. I've seen Scarborough, they do a really great job, and Westbrook does a good job. They keep their guys busy. They're, they're not looking out the garage windows waiting to get out during the day. And I'd love to see maybe some cross-training where Randy could get some help at the dump, and I don't know if that's something that could be looked into.
You're saying with our current Public Works staff, you'd like cross-training at, with the transfer station?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be, I think that would be, that would be great to see stuff like that, where you have departments working collaboratively instead of, in some cases, against each other, you know what I mean? In developing a s- a sense of, you know, partnership, and, and I'd like to see, yeah, I'd like to see our tax dollars being used well. But that's just a suggestion. I don't know if that's a far-out idea.
It's not extreme.
No, it's creative.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment?
No, I just wanted to say one more thing. Today, I, I, like, yesterday, I was wondering about the Facebook page, 'cause I like to follow the town Facebook, 'cause you find all kinds of, well, you never know what you're gonna find on the town Facebook page these days. But I, I was curious because we, this meeting tonight is a public hearing. It's always been, it's been a big deal. It's usually advertised. And I just want you to know that when I, on our Facebook page, I see who our new leader is in our town, and I saw all about the eclipse, I saw about the west, expect traffic delays. I mean, we have everything important on here, but when it came to the agenda tonight, not one thing was mentioned about this is the public's hearing. They're one opportunity to speak on the budget. I appreciate democracy, and I, I, I'm glad that people are here tonight and that we just don't sit home and do nothing. But I sometimes wonder if people, they want you, they, they say they want you to come out, but do they really want you to come out? But it would've been nice to have had a little Facebook post that said, "Tonight is a really important meeting for the community." I mean, I would like to have, I mean, I don't wanna just listen to what I like. I enjoy hearing what other people say. So, I just think there's ways that we could use our platforms to be more transparent to the public that you really do want input.
Thank you. Any other last thoughts? Go ahead.
Uh, just, just a couple, uh, quick things. Um, forgive me if I'm a little dense, but just to clarify, the town engineers, I mean, typically and currently, if a developer has a project he wants to do, he hires an engineer to design the project, to come to the planning board, and then he pays an engineer for peer review. So, will this town engineer do the peer review instead of him having to hire an engineer for that?
So, as I explained earlier, this, uh, town engineer may do the peer review, depending on their skillset and depending on the complexities of the project, and that will likely be included in permit fees, but it won't be necessarily the same as paying for necessarily an outsourced engineer. And we have to wait until we establish that position and establish that person to see what their skillset is and what they can and cannot do.
Why, why wouldn't you have, um, minimum requirements in the job application?
We do, but there's, um, just like lawyers, there's lawyers that specializes in certain things, there's engineers that specialize in certain things, and so we have to make sure we have, um, a good mix of the position that can support both engineering and project managing. And so, that's what we're, we, we have to recruit for that position. Who, who knows, we might not even get any applicants for it, and if we don't get any applicants for it, then we would have to continue to, to provide that, that service as we are now and continue to do that outsourced method.
And, yeah, one other thing quickly, um, you know, you're talking about, um, you know, getting some state funds for tracking where our trash goes. Um, I can tell you for free, it goes to EcoMaine.
That's not what the money's for.
No, it's not so much where it goes, but how much we're getting and, and-
I can explain exactly what the money from the state is. The state, um, a, a couple of other states across the country instituted an extended producer responsibility program where companies, a good example is Amazon. They produce boxes that we then have to recycle and we have to pay for. They're gonna charge Amazon a fee per box to, to recycle that materials, and that money's gonna get distributed to municipalities to help them subsidize their recycling processing. And so, that's a small example of one company, but there's all kinds of companies that generate certain eligible recyclable items that they'll be having to pay a fee for. So, a company that provides, makes yogurt cups, a company that makes jars, a company that makes packaging, like cereal boxes, things of that nature, they're all gonna have to pay a fee to the state, and there's gonna be a program at the state that distributes that money to municipalities to help in the cost of processing. There's certain equipment that's needed and certain data that's needed in order for us to receive all those funds. And EcoMaine, which the town owns a portion of, is building a new recycling facility that is being built now to help deal with that processing of that, to have the appropriate data. And we don't currently send our recycling to EcoMaine. Randy processes it, he bails it, and he sells it in the market, depending on, on what's happening. And so, right now, that method works for the town, but with those resources that are potentially available, it's something that the town should consider. And I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell the town and the town council things that are coming down for consideration that they would have to consider for the future. And so, all I did was identify that. It's not coming until, um, 2027, at which it will be eligible for expenses in 2026. And if the town decides to change how they handle trash and recycling, then those funds can be used to subsidize it. If they do not, then it will be, will be, will do our best to benefit as much as we can, but we, we might not be able to maximize as much money as we could get under the, the current method that we process recycling.
Yeah, and I know, um, and I served on the board at EcoMaine for a number of years, and I've had the conversation with Randy, uh, 'cause the, I mean, the board would like all of the communities to send their recycling to EcoMaine. But I've had, I had several conversations with Randy, and we decided the best thing for us in the town of Gray is to continue our own recycling program.
And that might still be the case?
That might still be the case, I'm just, yeah.
It's just, we will have to consider it when, when the time comes. Thank you.
I'm gonna make it quick. Brandon Mailroad, um, just a quick question about the engineer again. So, say we get an engineer of a higher competency level because you're, you're kind of putting two positions on the person. The, does the budget reflect another electric vehicle for that person to drive around in? Or a vehicle in general? Or is this gonna be something that's self, uh, self-expended?
No, so right now, in the budget, we, we budgeted, in the code enforcement budget, for two more electric vehicles, um, a lease for two more electric vehicles to consider in the future, and they'll be, essentially, my strategy would be to have shared town vehicles that when people need to go out into the field, a lot of times, if an engineer's going out into the field, they're gonna be going with the code enforcement officer or the assessor, and they'll, they'll be able to use those vehicles together. And so, with a pool of vehicles here at the town, we'll be able to utilize those, uh, to support the staff.
Just wanted to bring it up so that everyone could hear about vehicles.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? See anything online?
Andrew Edson, One Homestead Acres. Uh, just, just curious, as far as the vehicles go, do you guys have any way of tracking your employees or, or keeping account of what's going on in town? As far as where your code officers are, when they're, when they're at work, where, if they're at job sites? Do you guys have any means for that, or is there any, you guys looking into that at all?
We don't have tracking devices on our employees now.
No, you don't track, yeah, I mean-
He does, he does his job.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that here currently.
'Cause you, you, you may find that maybe you don't need the second code officer or the third part-time one. That's all I'm telling you.
Well, we used to have two full-time code officers, but we, last year, we split a one full-time position into two part-time ones, so it's-
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Last call on comments. I'm going to close public comment at 9:26 PM. And I do wanna thank you all for coming out. Uh, it's certainly a more engaging process when we have people here in the room commenting on what we're talking about, so I thank you for your time and energy, uh, this evening. So, um, the, our only action item tonight was to review and act upon approving the warrant articles for the town meeting. I'm inclined to table this for reasons I mentioned earlier. Um, heard from people, we might wanna discuss it. I'm just realizing you had comments you wanted to make. Do you want it to, before I go on, what do you?
Well, typically, we have a chance to discuss what we've heard before.
Yes, I'm realizing that, sorry. My, my brain is tired.
No, it's okay.
Um, so let me backtrack. I, the public hearing is closed, but we're just gonna take some time as a council to reflect on comments before I move on, so.
I'm happy to let others go first.
Think, maybe you're, you're it.
I think it's, we can agree on anything, we can agree that there's room for improvement, and especially in the budgeting process. Mike's been here a short period of time, but I think it's pretty obvious that in the short period of time, he's been able to, um, get a handle on where the skeletons are and where some of the problems are. We're not always gonna agree with what's in the budget. There's a lot of ingredients in the budget. Some of them we're gonna like, some of them we're not gonna like. There's things in here I don't like. I think we have to look at it as a whole, basically, is how I come down to making a decision. This process has been about one-third the length of our past budget processes. That in and of itself is improvement because it has, I think, created, if you remember back to all the revisions we had last year, it was very difficult for anybody to keep track of all that. So, condensing the process and making it simpler, I think, is gonna cause fewer problems in the future. Clearly, the spreadsheet process that we've had in the past failed us. It's led to, um, problems and inaccuracies in our budget in previous years. This Clear.gov solution isn't an inexpensive solution. It's something I've seen before, I support it 100% because it will do, as Mike said earlier, standardize the process for us, but it will also make it more transparent than, than any process we've ever had before. And I think we need to do that in order to rebuild some confidence in people that we're watching the store and the numbers are accurate and everyone can trust those numbers. One of the reasons why the eval keeps coming up is because we have to maintain a certain level, if you will, as far as our evaluation is concerned. If we let things get too out of whack from that standpoint, then it eats into the homestead exemption, the veterans exemption, and some of the other exemptions that people get from the state. So, we're required to maintain, to be within a range of that sort of 100% eval, and that's why I think you hear it more over the last few years, because things have been going up. The audit is something that we've been struggling with for two years now. We still don't have an audit, well, we have an audit firm, but we're still looking for an audit firm. We're in talks with somebody to help us with the audit, as was discussed earlier, and I think that's one of the most critical things that, that we have to do. I hear constantly that the tax base has to change. I've lived in town for 35-plus years now, and we've got essentially the same tax base today that we had when, when I moved to town back then. The percentages that Michael talked about are something that will help us afford the government that we have. And you heard tonight that we had a discussion on the floodplain ordinance that we had to change that was dictated to us by the federal government and the state government. There are other issues on the horizon for the town that could generate a lot of expense for us, depending on what happens. The size of our community can trigger federal stormwater regulations that would make things much more, could make things much more expensive for us. And one of the reasons I think we've struggled with the, with changing the tax base, you know, you hear, no one wants it to be like Wyndham, I don't want it to be like Wyndham. I want us to figure out what we wanna be ourselves. We spent a lot of time and money in the comp plan process, and we have an idea, we've got kind of a blueprint. How long have we been trying to get Yarmouth Road fixed? The state of Maine has committed $3 million to the design of Yarmouth Road and the village. We've won, with Ann's help and other people's help, an almost $900,000 federal grant to put sidewalks on Libby Hill Road and build a, a second emergency exit for the high school. We've acquired some other grant money that has helped us get things for the town that otherwise we would've had to pay for or gone without, like we've gone without with the Yarmouth Road. But we have to manage those things. We got a significant amount of money through the ARPA program with the federal government. Well, surprise, we're, I won't say in trouble with the federal government, but apparently we haven't managed that program correctly either. Along with the bond issues that we talked about earlier tonight. We have got to get our house in order in order to do anything, and I completely support the new positions in the accounting department. You know, it's embarrassing to be sitting here and to know that we had accounts that weren't getting paid in a timely fashion. There's no, there's no reason for that. We've gone through a lot of change over the last few years. We've lost a lot of what I refer to as institutional memory, people took that with them. But the spreadsheets that we have were built over, they've been used for, well, when some of you are on the council, they've been used for years. We have to make these changes, and I think we have to invest some money in order to do it, and it comes with risks. Someone mentioned earlier tonight that the follow-on years of this budget will be a tsunami of, of increased taxes. There, this, there's no way this town is gonna vote for a tsunami of new taxes in the future. And I don't think the council would support that either. We're taking some risks here, there's no doubt about that. We can't predict what the future will be, but I think that they're, they're measured risks, I think they're reasonable risks, and if they don't wa, work out, there'll be consequences, and we'll have to make changes. You know, this process started with this card, which should look familiar to everybody 'cause we mailed one to everyone back in January. We are trying to get people to be more involved, and we have the online piece that's part of that, and we have had a few people come out during the budget meetings. But it's much easier to be part of the discussion during that process than at the end. I guess the, the only other thing I wanted to say is that as far as the general fund is concerned and where money comes and where money goes, we forecast or budget, Michael's forecasted and budgeted for revenues in the coming year. We can't spend, or he can't spend, any more money than what the voters pass in June. If there's additional money that comes into the town, that money goes into that unfunded balance, and it sits there, and it takes the next budget process to spend that money. So, there isn't a risk of unbudgeted money being spent by the, by the town or this year until voters have a chance to approve that. And I think that that's something that, it's not easy to understand, it's easy to forget, that we have these mechanisms in place to protect us. When we collect fees, that goes into the general fund to offset the expenses that we're talking about. We, with these projects, pay consultants, engineering, engineering consultants to do inspections on these projects. If we have our own engineer, that's one of the things that the engineer likely could do and could save them. So, again, I think whether it's electric vehicles or whether it's some of the things that are in here that, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't support either. Taken as a whole, given the circumstances that we are in, the increases in our taxes this year are not coming from the municipal side. We'll see what happens in the future, but, but they're actually going down a little bit. And when we started this process, I'll be honest with you, I, I was hoping that we would get here, but I didn't honestly think that we would, so I'm fairly pleased with this result. I guess that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dan. Ann?
Yeah, I'm not gonna repeat everything Dan said, 'cause I, I agree with a lot of it. I, I just do wanna say that when I moved here in 198, in 1988, you know, Gray was a town of around 5,000 people, I think, if my memory serves me right. We're now at about 8,500. So, we haven't doubled in size, but we've gotten quite a bit bigger. It's not the same town as it was when even I, you know, moved here, and certainly not for those of you who were privileged to, you know, be born and grow up here, it's not the same town. I, I understand that, and that's a, a really hard thing. You know, for, for 35 years, I've been look, looking at the village and thinking, geez, I wish, I wish the council, I wish the town would do something to fix up the village, and, and it's just not ever happened. Finally, we have the resources in place, we have the, the staff re, you know, some of the staff resources, not quite yet all of them, to, to really help think about the village differently, and, and we've been working hard on that the last couple of years. The work that we're doing in the village will allow us to attract new businesses and also new residential development in, at a higher density levels than exist in the more diffused pattern throughout this town. You get actually much more tax, property tax per acre when you have higher density development. But higher density development requires, you know, it may require public sewer, it's a, you know, public water, storm, better stormwater, all of those things. Our stormwater system in the villages, in, in along Route 100 North is like 70 years old in places. I mean, that was a problem with, why didn't prior councils address those obsolete systems then? We're having to make up for, you know, stuff that wasn't maintained. It wasn't necessarily the council's job, I, you know, then perhaps it should've been the state of Maine, the Department of Transportation, but for whatever reasons, those, those stormwater systems weren't upgraded and they're failing now. That we have, you know, occasionally, we have these sinkholes in the intersections that a public works department has to come out and fix. So, our, our infrastructure is falling apart, we have to address it. It's gonna improve our ability to attract and retain businesses, and the, the higher density is gonna, you know, produce more property tax value per acre than, than we're getting now. And I, I just, the other thing I just wanna comment on is, is the, is the project management, 'cause I've been a lot of questions about that tonight, and yeah, it is an expensive position. I mean, any of you who have employees know that it's really difficult right now to hire new employees across all business sectors, and the public sector is not immune to that. It's, you know, we're having kind of a, a big reset, I guess, is maybe the best way to talk about it, in terms of, you know, people's salaries and, and, and their benefits. You know, for years, people were sprayed by on, on minimal increases or, and low pay, and they're just not willing to do it anymore. Some of that is driven by demographics. Where in older state, a lot of people are retiring, there aren't that many young people being born or coming to the state, and, and so, you know, there, it's a much more of a, of a, you know, a market for people looking for jobs and, as opposed to those offering them. So, yeah, we're struggling, and every town around here is, is struggling as well to hire staff. But I, I do wanna comment on the, the project management, though, because if we're gonna do these more complicated, you know, projects, we need to resource that work properly. The $834,000 congressionally-directed spending grant that we've been approved for, you know, that's gonna require somebody to manage that. Who's gonna do that? We, existing staff are already out straight. We need a project manager to do that work. The, the Village Transformation Project is gonna be a 30 million-plus-dollar project. Before anybody has a heart attack, that's not gonna come from your property taxes. Obviously, if, we're, we're gonna be, you know, applying for a federal grant under the RACE program, it's called. If, if we don't get that grant, we're not gonna do $30,000 worth of work in the village, I guarantee you that. But, you know, so we'll need to get that money in order to transform the village that we think, the way we want to. But that work requires, I mean, that project is gonna require a lot of work, it already has. I'm providing on a volunteer basis, a lot, that project management now. It's not something I'm particularly trained to do, I'm, I'm just kinda keeping it going at this point. Somebody who has more skills and experience and time to devote to that will do a better job helping us move that forward. It's also long-term inappropriate for a council member to do a staffing function, and, and so, and that's really what I've been doing over the last six months or, or so, eight months since I've been on the council. So, I, I think, you know, everybody understands that, we've understood from the start, but in order to move this project forward, I've been willing to stand up, and, and for the $2,000 I get paid every year to serve on the council, have put in a tremendous number of hours working on that and some other projects. I, I just finished a, a, working with a resiliency committee on a $50,000 grant to the state to protect the, you know, do more watershed protection with the lakes. And again, you know, there might be a role for the pro, new project manager in helping to administer that grant and make sure that the lakes, which are a huge, a huge importance to the town for taxpayer, you know, for, for the, for the value of the, the property taxes, but also just for recreational, for the, you know, and for the wildlife, to protect that. We, we need to protect our lakes and watersheds, and, and we can do a better job than we've been doing. So, that's what that work is about. So, you're getting a lot of value from this council. We've been a really hard-working council that has a lot, brings a lot of skill, but we can't do it alone, we need, we need help, we need, we need this project manager position.
Thank you, Ann. Matthew or Marty, do you have any comments?
They said it all, I think.
Yeah.
Matthew? I guess I, I'd just like to say that a lot of the comments that were brought here tonight are really valuable, and I think especially the one, the one that's ringing with me is this idea of what is the role of this town engineer gonna be? And I think that's a really important question that I think we can, you know, we as a council can, can think about and decide. Do we want this person to be doing detailed reviews of engineering plans for developments? Or do we want them to be doing something else? I think, I think that's an important question. And, you know, we've got a, a variety of views on what that, that position should be, but I, I just really wanna thank folks for coming out and for bringing their insights. I, there were, there were a lot of nuances brought out we haven't really addressed, and I think we go, you know, not necessarily focused on how we vote on this, on this budget, but I think more the nuances. I really appreciate people taking the time. Also, this idea of how do we get people, you know, where are the opportunities to get people to come? And, you know, we've got, got some input on that, too, which is really important to everyone on this council, I think, is to get people here and talking to us. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Matthew. And I, I won't elaborate further, I think other counselors have said anything I would say, probably more effectively. But I appreciate, I do appreciate, again, everyone's time and energy this evening. So, back to the action items, which are, are only one on the agenda tonight was to approve the warrant articles as written. How do counselors feel about tabling that? I, I would...
I agree with...
I would be favorably tabling.
Fine.
Yeah, all right. So, we will do that, and we will add it back to the agenda for our April, or excuse, yeah, April 23 meeting.
So, just procedurally, I think because it's on the agenda, somebody should make a motion to approve it, and then, and then someone make a tabling motion, so the mo, the original motion will be reconsidered at, at a future meeting.
Okay, yeah.
So, somebody could, should move to approve the warrants, and then somebody would make a subsequent motion to table it.
I, I, I move to approve the warrants in the, in the agenda, second.
Then I move to table.
Well, I think we have to take a vote on the first motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
This procedural issues? Okay, so, let's go to vote, Ann.
So, do I vote against my own motion?
No, we just approve.
I didn't make the motion, 'cause I wanted to just...
Right.
Well, so, so, right now, if the, if the council wants to table it, then they don't necessarily have to vote on it, but if, if you wanna take a vote, then you have to decide to vote no, and then the council can reconsider it. So, Ann's motion to table actually could be appropriate now.
Okay.
Before we take a vote on approving, right.
Yes, and then you take, take a vote at the next meeting.
Okay, so, Ann moved to table, is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, let's take a vote on tabling action item one. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And then also yes. Okay. So, we will revisit those warrants at our April, April 23 regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, next up is report from the council chair. I don't really have a lot to add for this evening. Really, I just wanna take a moment to thank everyone on staff for being adaptable to the storm we had this last weekend. I know that was very, it was a very bad storm. I know I lost power for a few days, as did much of the town, but I know public works and fire rescue, and also members here in administration and recreation and library were working hard to provide warming centers and alternative plans for people to have power and just a place to go to warp up. So, I just wanna take a minute to thank everybody for all their hard work this last weekend. And then I, and Ann and I will be meeting again with the MDOT tomorrow to discuss the Village Transformation Project. Hopefully, we will have some thoughts on Brown Street after tomorrow. And then Mike and I will be joining representatives from New Gloucester and the school district for a tour of Unity Environmental, I guess they're Unity Environmental University, which is housed at the Pineland campus. We're hoping to find some opportunities for collaboration with them. with them. And then, I just want to encourage everyone, if you watched Mike's presentation earlier, he noted that he's going to be going, having some opportunities for outreach about the budget over the next two months. And I just want to encourage everyone to stay engaged in that process and come out to vote on June 11. That's all I have for update. Mike, did you have some?
Yes, I have a few items to talk about in the Town Manager's Report. Disappointed that some folks in the audience left, because I have some items that were kind of talked about that I can clarify things on during this presentation. But I did want to add to the chair's point about the months until the budget vote in June. Anybody that was here today, I'm happy to meet one-on-one with to answer.
Yeah.
If you guys, yeah.
For those in the room that are having conversations, if you wouldn't mind just stepping outside, thank you. Your voices are being picked up on the mic.
If anybody would like to meet with me one-on-one to discuss the budget, I'm happy to take that time and to try to give people more detail. It's difficult to have that detail in a spreadsheet, as we talked about, and that's why the town's investing in a more robust budget program so we can help have more detail available to residents. So, I'm happy to meet with anybody. But I just had a few items to report on. Everyone knows I've been reporting on open positions. We have a light equipment operator position at the Public Works Department, a transfer station position. And we have an assistant clerk position. It's one of the challenges around the assistant clerk position. We've had one open for quite a while, and folks recognize that and identified that at times that we have a line. We haven't been able to fill this position completely due to a number of different reasons. Competitiveness of our workforce. The, one of the reasons as well is a lot of towns and cities around us have a four-day work week, which has been referred to in discussion this evening, and I have more information on. So, it's been difficult for us to recruit when every surrounding municipality has a four-day work week. Other areas are main state retirement. We don't offer main state retirement or main public employees retirement system for all our employees. So, it's difficult for us to get experienced public employees to come work here. So, we're doing our best to try to be competitive so that way we can continue to recruit people. We have positions of firefighters, recreation, both summer and ongoing positions available. Town engineer and project manager that we're hiring for, and the library. And we won't be hiring for other positions until the budget's approved. We're hiring for the town engineer and project manager right now because the town, in last year's budget vote, set aside money for engineering and project management and planning for the Village Transformation Project. So, we're going to utilize those funds to bring on that position early. And if for some reason the budget gets rejected and people don't want that position, then we'll have to reconsider how we handle that in the future. Also, wanted to share more about the transfer station. I know we talked about it. Again, there was a misunderstanding regarding changes to recycling. That misunderstanding actually started with Randy, our director. And so, as part of some of that misunderstanding, Randy sent an apology note to the community that I'll read right now. He said, "Dear Gray Community, I'm writing to sincerely apologize for my misunderstanding of information presented to me by Mr. Foley, which I subsequently communicated to my staff and members of the public about our operation. I understand the importance of accuracy and transparency when sharing information, and I regret any confusion or harm that my actions may have caused. I take full responsibility for this misunderstanding that was shared, and I'm committed to rectifying the situation and rebuilding trust with the community for all involved. I will be diligent in ensuring that all information I share in the future is reliable and accurate. I look forward to working with Mr. Foley, the town council, the community, how it evaluates how best to serve Gray's solid waste and recycling needs. I deeply apologize for any inconvenience or distress that my actions may have caused, and I thank you for your understanding and forgiveness." And that was submitted to the council and the public by Randy Cookson, our solid waste director. And so, we, again, have no plans to close the transfer station. We just may be handling things different in the future. And I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't share with the council those future considerations. And then, lastly, I just want to talk about the extended hours a little bit more that are going into effect May 6. We are open three and a half hours currently on Friday, and we're using those three and a half hours to have longer hours the other days of the week. We've heard from people that it's difficult to come during normal business hours. And so, we've instituted an early morning day of, on Thursday, of 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's so that people could come before normal business hours to be able to register a car or get a permit. The other days of the week, we previously used to open at 8:30 and closed at 4:00. We'll be opening at 8:00 a.m. and closing at 5:00 p.m. So, we'll be opening a half hour early most days and opening, be opening an hour later most days. And then we switched to late night from Thursdays to Tuesdays to be 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. One because it's, it makes it, makes it more convenient for staff to be able to attend evening meetings. A number of staff have to attend evening meetings. And if they're already here until 6:00, supporting members of the community, it's kind of a time where members of the community could come in advance of a town council meeting, people who come here today. So, it helps to make it also more convenient for the public to be able to come here when there's already other things happening here at the town hall. And so, we think that that will best support the public. And so, these hours can be adjusted to best support the community. If we need to extend it more on certain days, at the 3:00 p.m. timeframe on Fridays, I built in some buffer into the budget to be able to potentially adjust these hours if we need to. But this is a very critical thing for our employees to be able to work as much as they can within, within the hours that we have, and extend those hours to be able to best serve employees. And also, to continue to recruit, as I mentioned in the other, other post earlier about job posting, every municipality around us has, works only four days, and they're open four days. And so, it's very difficult for us to recruit people to come work here if they know that, that they have to be here five days a week. And so, it's something that's evolving in municipal world. It's evolving in workplaces all over, to be able to help better manage staff and make staff more productive, because we're here for a longer time and we're able to get more done in that short amount of time. So, we're hoping that most of the community can be supportive. It's very difficult to please everyone and very difficult to make a schedule that works perfect for everyone. So, we're open to tweaking the schedule, but we think that this will be able to better serve our residents in the future, long term. And then, the other item, code enforcement help with North Yarmouth. The town of North Yarmouth contacted us saying that their code enforcement officer left and that they needed help. And so, we're temporarily able to help Yarmouth with our, North Yarmouth with our current code enforcement staff. With the adjusted schedule as well, we'll have more code enforcement coverage during the four days a week, and we can feel that we can best support them. We look, we thoroughly reviewed their needs, and it looks like we'll only have to support them approximately five to 10 hours a week. And that will be with our entire code enforcement office. So, all the staff will be helping to support our friends and neighbors in North Yarmouth. And we hope that North Yarmouth would do the same thing for us if we were in that difficult position, either with code enforcement or any other thing. And so, we're able to help them on a temporary basis. They're going to be paying us approximately $40,000 a year for that service. And at this point, we are going to be evaluating whether or not this is something that will be temporary or be long-term. They previously had a full-time position that they had filling that role, and they don't necessarily believe that they may or may not need a full-time position long-term. And so, we're able to partner with them, get some potential revenue for the town, and also be able to support their operations. And like I said, this will be evaluated over time. I haven't built that revenue into the budget as a revenue stream because we don't know how long it will last. It could last three months. It could last four months. It could last 12 months. We don't know how long it could last. I'm working on finalizing a memorandum of understanding with North Yarmouth that we'll enter into to be able to provide these services to North Yarmouth temporarily while they evaluate how best to meet those needs in their town going forward. And then, we have the joint meeting with our comp plan and zoning discussion, which has been rescheduled to May 14. So, we apologize for that inconvenience and that rescheduling. And then, just wanted to reiterate what some items the chair said about the recent storm. It was a very, very challenging storm, both from a snow removal standpoint and down power lines and down trees. And our public works staff did an outstanding job to be able to maintain passage for members of the community, as well as maintain access for central main power and tree crews and central main powers contractors, to be able to restore power in the town as quickly as possible. Thankfully, a large portion of the town was able to be responded by Saturday following the storm. We did open up a warming center on Friday that I was here to help open with recreation staff and library staff. And we were able to get that open to serve residents for charging and warming, and we provided some pizza. And so, we had that resource available. It didn't get a lot of usage, but it was good to have that available for residents. A lot of residents have generators or found other means to go stay with family who had power and things of that nature. On Friday, as more power began to be restored, we partnered with our friends in North Yarmouth who made their warming center available to be able to serve residents if they, if they needed, given that some activities were happening at the recreation gym next door here. And then, the library, actually, power was restored midday at the library, and we opened up the library in addition as a warming center for, for folks to be able to use. And thankfully, by Sunday, most of the power in the town had been restored. And we thank all the responders who did that. Our public safety departments were also extremely busy dealing with downed wires. I was surveying damage with the chief, and we got called to a house fire in North Yarmouth that took place when power was restored. And we offered our help to help try to solve that problem for that residence in North Yarmouth, with our fire department responding as mutual aid. And so, there was a lot of incidents to respond to. And the public works department will be working in the days and weeks ahead to pick up remaining brush, restore any damages that occurred to public right-of-ways and roadways, and they'll be working hard in the weeks ahead. We're hoping that this be a, the storm will be declared a federal disaster at some point. Those usually come later, which will make the town eligible for reimbursement for some of the expenses that we've incurred to do what we did to respond to the emergencies. And so, we'll report on that in the future, should, should that be an item. That's all I had for my Town Manager's Update, and happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone have questions for Mike?
No, thank you.
I just, I actually did have one question. So, I believe last year we had a grant fund to install a generator at the library, and I was wondering if that was of use yet. I know that the library lost.
It was two weeks away from finalization.
Oh, okay.
With, given the weather challenges that we've been having. It actually got delayed from some of the storms that we had. But once that's in place, we had gotten that grant, so the library could be a warming center. That way, it's a place that's staff. But sometimes, in storms like we had, it was also difficult for a lot of library staff to get to the library. Thankfully, our director lives here in town close by, but not all the staff can respond. So, we're going to have to manage that in the future and how we establish warming centers. But that, the library will be able to be that, and it'll have supplies for people to use and, you know, internet, if the internet's not lost and things of that nature.
Okay. Thanks for that update. Yeah, I just, it piqued my curiosity when I knew the power was out. Okay. Anyone else have questions for Mike? No? Okay. I will move on to committee reports. Matthew, do you want to start us off?
The Gray Community TV Committee met on the 27th. I missed the meeting. They met at 4:00, and I had work commitments that kept me from attending the meeting. But apparently, it was a, a good and productive meeting. Lots of projects there with trying to give, you know, input on the budget from the public and things like that. The Rec Committee met on April 1st, and I missed that meeting as well. They do have a, an agenda out from that meeting. But I, you know, just missed it. And that's it. Well, the library trustees meeting was postponed also until April. And that's all my committees.
Okay. Thanks, Matthew. Marty?
The Planning Board will have a site walk tomorrow afternoon in the vicinity of 275 Mayo Road at 5:00 p.m. And also, the Planning Board will have its regular meeting on the 11th, Thursday, at 7:00 p.m. The Finance Committee will meet on the 16th of April at 4:00 p.m. The Wild Blueberry Festival will meet at 1:30 p.m. at Town Hall on the 17th. A Community Day will meet at noon on the 16th, probably in the same room that, that conference room right here. And Zoning Board had a training session on March 27th that where, where they had the attorney present. And the next meeting, if there's any applicants, will be April 24th at 7:00 p.m. And that's all I have.
That's great. Yeah, I'm glad to hear the ZBA was able to finally have that training. I know they've been asking about it. So, that's great. Dan?
Yeah, the training was done by the town's attorney. It's part of our agreement with them that they'll do sort of one free board training a year. So, that was, the town didn't incur any additional cost for that training. And I talked with Brad Boglade, the chair of the ZBA, and he had some follow-on questions, which I think he'll take up with Tammy. And Marty, pretty much told everybody about Planning Board, so that was that.
Great. Thanks, Dan. Ann?
None of my committees has met since the last council meeting. I will note, though, that the resiliency did submit the community action program application, and we have heard back that it was received and that we should hear that, on that by mid to late May. Resiliency also agreed via email to participate in the Gray Community Day. And I think that's it on my committee update.
Okay. Thanks, Ann. The ordinance advisory committee will actually be meeting as part of the workshop that Mike mentioned earlier on, which was rescheduled to May 14 at 6:00. So, I hope everyone can make it to that, as we indicated we could. And the GP COG Executive Committee will be meeting again on April 23 at noon. I also want to note, I have decided to run for the one-year seat that's open, and I'm currently serving on the GP COG Executive Committee. I informed Christina Egan that I was planning to run again, and of course, I need to win the seat to continue in this role. But she has inquired about whether I would be interested in serving as president of the GP COG Executive Committee. I just want to raise that for folks, because that would be a commitment going forward if I were to continue. I haven't committed to anything, but just wanted to bring it up as a future topic of discussion when we talk about assignments at the next session, if it is relevant to me. That's all I have for committee reports, as they're just future meetings for now. Council correspondence and activities, and you'll note, at Dan's request, I've also added in this section, just update, if you have any, on the priorities that are assigned to you in our task list. I know that that's been underused, and we need to reconvene about how we're using that. But if you do have any updates on things that have been assigned to you, that this would be the time to update folks on them. So, Ann, I'll start with you on this section.
Let's see. I watched a Grow Smart Maine webinar on farmland protection, and there was a lot of useful information in it. And I wondered if it might be something we should share with at least some of the council boards and committees. I know Mike did that.
Yeah, Mike did send that around.
All right, good. I thought I had seen that. So, I mean, I, some of it was a little bit nerdy, but I think that Gray has some farmland that even if it's not actively being used, you know, we need to think about protecting, because that farmland is easy to develop into residential subdivisions, and then it's gone. And for purposes of farmland, anyway. Mike and I have been in contact with New Gloucester regarding a possible grant application under the federal Safe Streets for All program. I think I might have mentioned in the last council meeting. There's, there are several upcoming deadlines. The one that we have our eye on is in August. And Gray would likely need to serve as the lead applicant, but GP COG is available to help write the proposal. So, Gloucester is kind of looking at it. They've got to meet with their select board, and we, if we're, we're going to try and pull together a meeting in the next month or so. And then, the Village Transformation Project, we're going to meet tomorrow, as Krista mentioned, to talk about the Brown Street intersection and some possible sort of playing with that intersection over the course of the summer to test some of our design ideas.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that. Okay, Dan?
I'm not going to report, but a quick question for Ann. I thought you said we were going to give the grant with New Gloucester pass at our last meeting, because there was too many things going on.
I, we sort of, we, we were leaning in that direction, and then GP COG reached back out to us and reminded us of something that I had sort of not really picked up on or failed to mention, that they had discussed in the Vision Zero that they had discussed in the Vision Zero meeting that we had last month, is that they're willing to write the grant for us. And, and so, and then, it's like another, you know, year probably before we see the money. So, it's, it's something our project manager, future project manager could help us with, but, you know, in terms of implementing, but I, I think there's, it's still worth a look, you know?
Oh, that's fine, I just wanted to.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, that certainly back, and, yeah, because I, you know, it just seemed, there is a lot going on right now.
There is a lot going on.
Yeah.
And we don't have all the horses, because we need to pull the wagon yet.
That's right, absolutely.
Did you have any correspondence you wanted to report out?
Uh, no, I, I had one.
Okay. Marty?
I had a brief conversation with Randy at the transfer station the other day when I was down there, asking him about the returnable bottles, et cetera, what happens to them. And he says they turn them in, and we pick up about 10 grand a year in funding from that. So, that's pretty good. I was impressed with that.
Matthew?
Yeah, I don't have any, I, I haven't had any correspondence or discussions with the public. As far as, you know, the teams, tasks, or whatever they had tasks, I guess they're called. You know, we, obviously, we heard about the cannabis ordinance, and, you know, we know we need to get that underway. But I don't have any other, you know, there's no other motion or updates to anything I've been assigned.
Great, that's fine.
Do you have things older on our list than the cannabis?
Yeah, we do.
So, we're going to need to go through and reprioritize that, I think.
Yeah, we can revisit a conversation. I know, I mentioned in our last meeting, we had identified three things in the fall. One was the watershed ordinance, which now the Resiliency Committee is taking on. The cannabis ordinance and the ad hoc committee we discussed creating. And then, the roads and driveway standards was the other one. But we can, we can certainly have a conversation about that perhaps at a workshop. Mike?
If I might suggest, maybe in the coming weeks after we get past the budget process, if we maybe schedule a workshop just to go through that entire list?
Yeah.
And some of the items that maybe we already have, you know, that we're working on, we can either take off or mark as completed or in process, and then, you know, talk about some of them, where you want other things to be for me to help prioritize.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Obviously, knowing that, like you said, we don't have enough horses, but we'll do our best to try to attack which things we can. If the council does think the marijuana or the cannabis ordinance is a priority, you know, I can work to try to find some model ordinances and try to see if I can craft a, pick a stab at what might be appropriate for Gray, and then bring it to the council to talk about and consider.
Yeah, we had talked about creating an ad hoc committee to do just that and think about what we might like to see in an ordinance, but we can revisit it, I think, a meeting.
That might take more time than I think folks want.
That's possibly true, but.
Well, and I, yeah, and I think there, like I said, I think the, the roads and street piece is actually older than the cannabis piece.
It is, yeah.
So, I feel the need to, I, I know that we don't get to our lists like we wish we could, but I think it's important, in fairness to the groups that have come before us, to sort of deal with them in order.
Yeah, and let's, let's not get into it too much now at 10, 12:00 p.m., but we should definitely schedule a workshop to have that conversation, yeah. Ann?
I just, one, I forgot to mention on my to-do list was the LD1 ordinance. And that one was approved by the House as well, and passed by the House and has been sent to the governor for her signature. So, I haven't heard yet whether or not she signed it, but I believe she indicated that she would. And so, LD1 hopefully is going to be behind us.
Thanks, Ann. Yeah, I know you've been following up on that, so I appreciate that, and also the work of our state reps and state senator. I did have just a couple of things to report out on. As I've been collecting signatures, I've had a couple of conversations with two school-born members about their budget process and how that's been. Nothing too enlightening, just some, everything we already know, but just to put it out there. And then, also, I had a conversation with a neighbor about the town meeting we hosted in September and his thoughts around that. But that's all I had to report on. So, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So, we'll move, second. Second.
Second, third, and fourth.
Alright, and then, we can just do a show of hands, all in favor of adjourning this evening? Oh, four to one, Dan, who was opposed to adjournment. Alright, we are concluding at 10:14 p.m. For those of us, for those of you who've hung on this long, I thank you for your time and attention. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.